Good evening. At this time, we will call to order the Loudoun County Planning Commission Public Hearing for Thursday, May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. And our first order of business will be to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just for all.
You know, not much in the way of opening remarks today. I do want to mention that tonight, we are without Commissioner Kirschner and Commissioner Merrifield. Um, we're hopeful that they will, uh, join us at the very next work session. Uh, my understanding is they are both well, so, um, we, we hope that they, we will see them soon. And I would like to have us to acknowledge, um, and to, to give one second of silent reflection for the children and the two teachers who met with the most grim of fates in the mass shooting in Texas, um, yesterday, earlier this week, um, under the gun violence that occurred. Not a political statement, but just an acknowledgement of the loss of life and the tragedy that we experience as a community and a nation. We hope strength for their families and their community. And now, we would ask for a motion. Does, will one of the commissioners provide a motion, um, for the minutes of the previous?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission approve the minutes for the Loudoun County Planning Commission Public Hearing dated April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, uh, as presented.
Second.
We have the motion by Commissioner Combs, properly seconded by Commissioner Frank. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, the ayes have it, so that would be, I'm sorry. So, the ayes have it, so there will be six, zero, five, zero, two. You have seen also? Okay, 'cause two of you weren't here. So, we have two absent today, two absent before, five oh two two. You guys love doing that to me. You just, I mean, look at him smiling. He loves it. Thank you. Okay, disclosures. Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Vance.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes, uh, whoops, where are they? Um, okay, on, uh, since I wasn't here the last time we met, um, April eighth, I met with Colleen Gillis and Cooley regarding the Defender Drive application. On April twenty-five, I met with Sasha Brower, Mike Romeo with Walsh Calucci along with Chuck Coon regarding JK three. On, um, April twenty-eighth, I met with Chuck and Stacy Coon regarding JK three. On, um, May four, I met with Roy Barnett and Denise Harper with Van Meter regarding the Orm Property Application. And on May twelve, I met with Colleen Gillis, Cooley, and Nick Over with Kite regarding the One Loudoun Application. That is all.
Uh, Commissioner Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May ninth, I participated in a Broadlands Community Meeting with the HOA and various county staff, including supervisors and staff from both the Broad Run and Ashburn Districts. On May eleventh, I met with, um, Colleen Gillis and James Brothers regarding the Hyde Park Application. On May seventeenth, I met with Mike Romeo, Rich Brittingham, and John Benner, excuse me, regarding the Innovation Multi-Family Application. Also on the seventeenth, I met with Colleen Gillis and James Brothers regarding the Hyde Park applic-, Hyde Park Application. Also on the seventeenth, I met with Ben Wales regarding the Moran Road Application. On May twentieth, I met with Colleen Gillis and Nick Over regarding, and Supervisor Glass and some staff were present regarding the One Loudoun Application.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Combs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, on May ninth, I too participated, or at least attended, uh, the Broadlands HOA Meeting regarding the Hyde Park Application. On May the eighteenth, I had a video conference with the Cooley Team, um, Colleen Gillis, Ben Wales, Molly Novotny, uh, regarding the Moran Road ZRTD with, uh, applicant representative from Penzance, and also the One Loudoun ZCPA with Nick Over. And then, on May the twenty-fifth, I had a phone conversation with Ron Meyer regarding the Hyde Park CCPA.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair, Simon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On, uh, Wednesday, March twenty-third, um, I had a, a conversation with Mike Romeo regarding the Collinade Application. On Friday, April first, I met with Colleen Gillis to speak about Defender Drive East. On Tuesday, uh, April fifth, I had a meeting, uh, on Rivanna with Michelle Frank, Buddy Reiser, Tristan Simon, Stan Nix, Colin Charter, Bill Johnson, and Brian Winterhalter. On Monday, April fourth, I had a, a conversation with Colleen Gillis, Ron Meyer, and a few other people on Hyde Park. On Tuesday, April eighth, I met with Mike Romeo, Eric Anderson, Mark Sims, Brian Martin, Angela Rassus, Matt Leterno, Tom Parker, Jared Midwood, Greg La图, and Susan Magoy regarding Route Fifty Projects in the Dulles District. On Friday, April twenty-second, I had a conversation with Sasha Brower and Mike Romeo regarding the JK three application. On Thursday, April twenty-eighth, I had a meeting with Chris Stone from Loudoun County, uh, regarding the Mountain View Stormwater, uh, Issues. On Monday, April or May sixteenth, I had a meeting with Colleen Gillis, Ben Wales, Ben Over, Molly Novotny, Dennis, Dennis B., and John Cuturis regarding the One Loudoun Application and the Moran Road Application. On, and on Wednesday, April or May twenty-fifth, I met with, I had an email conversation with Brian Clifford regarding the Poland Road, uh, Equipment, uh, Application. And that concludes my disclosures.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I would like to, the first thing I want to do is, I'll do my disclosure first. On Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, I had a brief discussion with Hobie Mitchell about the villages at Clear Spring. Also, yeah, so that's, that's the disclosure. Secondly, uh, Mr. Galinda, you are probably aware, I had a brief discussion with, uh, members of the Board of, of Directors, of which I am a member, uh, also of the Loudoun County, I'm sorry, of the Waterford Foundation. And they would like to come along with other members of the Coalition of, Coalition of Historic Villages to provide some sort of an overview of the various issues confronting the historic villages throughout the county as part of the zoning rewrite process. So, we can talk about that off camera and figure out if there's a way to accommodate that either in written form or in, in some other fashion. Um, thirdly, I'd like to say, I, um, without going into the particulars, I'm just gonna say that, uh, I have been, I've had a lot of problems with my, um, my county email. And, uh, the county staff has been extremely conscientious about working with me, um, but it has been chronic, to say the least. Um, and so, it works in the building, it doesn't work outside the building. And so, they fix it, it sounds, it seems fine when I appear in the deos, and then I get to other places, like my home office or my real office, it doesn't work. Now, why am I mentioning that? Obviously, not to put my colleagues on the spot, but I feel like I miss a lot of outreach from, uh, our colleagues in the private sector and maybe even citizens. So, anyone in the audience, uh, and anyone watching, I want to share my private phone number and email address right now and invite you to use it anytime that you like in order to reach me as the Chairman of the Planning Commission to ask questions, to send information, to communicate in any way that you see fit. Um, just don't assume that the county email always gets to me. So, you're happy to use, or you're welcome to use, three zero one, two five four, three 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 five is my cell. And you can always use Forrest with one R, F O R E S T, Hayes, H A Y E S, twenty nineteen at gmail dot com. Three zero one, two five four, three 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 five, and Forrest Hayes twenty nineteen at gmail dot com. Now, I'm not so vain to think everybody's looking to get in touch with me, but I just, I want to make sure that people can, and I don't want people thinking like, I sent him an email, he never responded. I may not have gotten it or gotten it in time, because every time I come here and ask for it to be fixed, they fix it right away. But sometimes I see that there was an email that I may have missed that was timely in nature. Okay? So, thank you. With that, we will move along to the, uh, legislative portion of our public hearing. The first item on the agenda, ZMAP dash two zero two one dash zero 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 six, SPEX dash two zero two one dash zero zero two two, ZMOD dash two zero two one dash zero zero two zero, ZMOD dash two zero two one dash zero zero two one, ZMOD dash two zero two one dash zero zero two three, and ZMOD two zero two one dash zero zero two four, Hyde Park. Our project manager, Mr. Bryce Johnson, how are you doing, Bryce?
Uh, doing well this evening.
Please start whenever you are ready.
Well, I believe I'm sharing the PowerPoint up, um, let's just give it a, there we go. Okay. All right, good, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Bryce Johnson, I'm the County Project Manager for the Hyde Park Application. Uh, the property subject to this application is an approximately fifty-eight acre site located south of the Dulles Greenway, is located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Belmont Ridge Road and Broadlands Boulevard. Um, as you can see on the screen, it's generally surrounded by existing residential to the south and west. Uh, it's kind of hard to see, but the, um, LCPS Administrative Building is to the east as well as the Clyde's Restaurant. And across the Greenway, you've got some additional residential as well as the Goose Creek, um, Village. Tonight, the applicant proposes a number of applications, um, to ultimately permit development of up to seven hundred ninety-five dwelling units. Uh, first, they propose a zoning map amendment, or a ZMAP, to rezone the property to the R sixteen ADU zoning district. That's the, um, residential sixteen zoning district inclusive of affordable dwelling units. Uh, they also propose, uh, special exception and a few zoning modifications to modify the development standards, which I'll elaborate on a bit more in a minute. Uh, here's a quick summary of the residential units proposed. Um, the majority of them are single-family attached, it's four hundred and thirty-eight units, and then, uh, three hundred and fifty-seven multifamily units broken up as multifamily stacked, so those are like the two over two type units, or like, um, triplexes, which is something that they're proposing, as well as the attached units, which is what you may typically think of when you think of multifamily being like the apartment or condo building. I've also got the numbers up there for the, um, included affordable units, the majority of which are ADUs as well as twenty unmet housing needs units. And here's an excerpt of the Concept Development Plan, or the CDP. Um, they've got it generally broken into, um, three general categories of land bays, the first of which would be the single-family attached land bays closer to the roads, those would be the townhomes. And then, as you transition away from the roadways, uh, you get the multifamily units, which are the, the denser, um, taller buildings. Uh, basically, the closer you get to the Dulles Greenway, and as well, you see, you can also see in green, uh, some of the open space features where the community amenities would be. So, um, as we begin, I want to first highlight the place type, um, just for some context, because the applicant is proposing to, um, develop under the suburban compact neighborhood place type, um, which is permitted for limited areas within the suburban mixed-use place type. As you can see on the screen, it is located in the suburban mixed-use place type. Um, it's the largest undeveloped portion of this portion of, or this area of, um, what's been planned for mixed-use, stretching from the Goose Creek Village to the north, on the other side of the Greenway, and then, um, the Broadlands Village Center to the east, which contains some existing retail. Uh, you've also got the suburban, uh, compact neighborhood to the south, which is, um, kind of a infill parcel right now that's remaining, to be developed at some point in the future. Uh, and then, I'll, I'll just note that, um, what we see for the retail on the screen is kind of a shift from standalone retail to the mixed-use, um, retail environments that's planned for here to support our existing and new businesses in the future. Uh, the reason I mention that is 'cause, um, so this is the suburban, suburban mixed-use place type, and as you know, limited areas within that place type may be considered instead under the suburban compact neighborhood place type. Um, I'll note that the twenty nineteen general plan describes this place type, um, basically for small infill parcels, and staff does not find that this really meets that description. Um, so, we did want to raise that for your awareness before we move on to the seven criteria, um, that the twenty nineteen general plan specifically lays out for consideration of these limited areas. Um, so again, as you know, um, as you've heard before, there's seven criteria for consideration under, um, this place type. They fully meet, uh, three of them, um, however, there needs to be some work to fully address the others, and I do want to, um, spend some time explaining what needs to be done with those. Uh, first up is the criteria for the, um, basically providing unmet housing needs. So, right now, they, they are meeting the criteria for, um, affordable housing for multifamily units. However, the, um, policy guidance we have is to look for fifteen percent of the single-family units as affordable. Right now, they're at six percent, so we would recommend that they provide an additional nine percent of those units as affordable. That percentage increase could be from, um, increasing the number of units that are affordable or just lowering the overall total as well. Additionally, there's the, um, third criteria of consideration, which is proximity to transit options, uh, specifically being located within a quarter mile of transit, um, which would be bus service or metro. Um, I'll note that even though transit is planned for this portion of the county, um, and we're fairly along, fairly certain it'll come at some point, um, whenever metro is to open, but at this point, it, there's no existing transit, so that criteria cannot be met. Additionally, there's the criteria for, um, being within a quarter, or not quarter mile, a half mile of a complementary mix of uses or employment options. I'll note that the closest mix of uses that, um, we would consider would be the Goose Creek Village to the north. It's exactly, um, basically is the crow flies from corner, property corner to property corner, um, a half mile. However, if you consider actual walking or driving, it'd be more than that, and then you've also got some retail further to the east. Uh, and I will acknowledge that we've got, um, the Administrative Building at Clyde's next door, but that's, that's not the type of complementary mix of uses that we're looking for. We're looking for like the mixed-use environment, not just a single, um, really a singular user two. And then, we've also got, uh, the innovation and design, um, this being some sort of innovative design, uh, specifically, uh, techniques to show a perceived, perceived density that matches the existing conditions. Um, for example, the, the missing middle housing that we hear about, in this case, they've got the, um, stacked town, or not, the stacked units, which are visually similar to townhouse units, and they've got the, what they're proposing is tri-pack units, which is a new type that we haven't seen in the county, but we do need, uh, staff would recommend some additional clarifications in the proffers as to how those are gonna function and make sure that we actually do see those. Additionally, as outlined in the staff report, uh, their, staff does have concerns about the environmental impacts for the site. It is predominantly forested right now, and the applicant is committing to some environmental, um, mitigation measures. However, staff does note that the proposed tree conservation area is insufficiently sized to properly, um, provide proper tree coverage, root area, and even like the width to, um, operate properly for what we would recommend. So, staff recommends that they either expand that, and then in the process also include additional wetlands on the property, or if that can't be done, uh, provide additional mitigation onsite or alternate mitigation, whether that's additional plantings or additional, um, measures. And I do have NRT on the line tonight, if you have further questions about what that could look like. Uh, next up, there are some fiscal issues. Uh, next up, there are some fiscal issues with the, um, impacts. The largest of which is that the applicant proposes a shared-use path over the Greenway, which, as I said, over the Greenway, you can imagine will more than likely include a bridge, um, which they estimate to cost approximately fourteen million dollars. We don't necessarily disagree with that assessment. Um, however, they propose a credit against the entirety of the regional road, um, contributions as well as, uh, about ten million of the capital facilities contributions. So, the capital facilities contributions, we typically expect to go towards identified capital needs, um, in the county, such as supporting our schools, or additional, um, public facilities, such as the incoming Ashburn Community Center. Um, while we don't disagree that this is a missing pedestrian link in the county, um, it's not an identified need at this time, so we would not support that credit. Additionally, we do, um, continue to note, as we do in, um, most of the applications, that we do anticipate, um, capital facilities and transportation contributions for the affordable units. Um, as I mentioned before, there's a few, um, development modifications. Uh, one of them, for the individual yards, we could, uh, support with some additional commitments, um, for the site design. However, the others regarding increased in zoning district size, and increase in building height, and the, um, decrease in roadway setbacks, the staff cannot support. Um, the criteria for approval have not been met. They have not demonstrated that they, um, can achieve the same density onsite without these, and it's, um, that we don't see anything innovative or be going beyond the zoning ordinance requirements. Um, with that said, uh, I do want to clarify that staff cannot support approval of the proposal. It, it, it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, um, specifically the suburban compact neighborhood place type, which they propose to develop under, um, both with the criteria and the place type itself. Uh, the place type does envision, um, a preferred mix of uses, which would include some non-commercial. And additionally, uh, there are other issues to address, such as the environmental transportation and fiscal impacts, that we would recommend continue to be worked on. Um, with that said, if the commission is supportive of working these out, we would recommend forwarding it to a work session. And like I said, I've got NRT, community planning, and, uh, DTCI on the line, and Bev Tate from the, uh, school system is here as well, if there's questions about that.
Commissioners, uh, questions for staff? Commissioner Miller.
So, um, Bryce, it's a half a mile, it's point four-nine miles from the northwest corner of this property to the southeast corner of Goose Creek. And we're saying that while that does meet the, one of the seven criteria technically, but when you actually walk it, it doesn't. So, my question is, when do we get to decide what, when we live by the letter of the general plan, or when we don't? Because if we're saying it meets the criteria, but it doesn't really, because you have to walk really further, and you're really not walking from edge to edge, you're walking from the middle to the middle, and now it's a mile. So, is it a half a mile? Or is it from the furthest two corners of two points to get to? I'm trying to understand what a half a mile means. I'm trying to understand what, for me, in meeting these seven criteria, what the transit thing means, if we're going to have a bus stop there, they're proffering to build bus stops, why would we have a bus lane there if we haven't had, we haven't one open metro or two had people living there yet? So, it will meet the transit. So, I'm, I'm trying to understand how we get to these seven criteria and accept or reject them, or say they meet it and don't meet it, if it's inconsistent from application to application, um, and, and, and everything we apply. Like, when we did the university center thing, we said, "Well, they need to do another warrant study for a traffic light, because it's fine now, but in the future, it might be a problem, so we want them to do a study now." Well, if we're talking about the future, in the future, this will have transit access. So, that criteria has been met. I, I, I'm a little, uh, please explain to me, I'm a little bit of a loss as to when we decide something meets the criteria or doesn't, because if we're going by the letter of the, of the general plan, it meets the criteria.
So, the current policy right now doesn't specify how to measure that, and it, whether you look at it as point four-nine miles or point five-one mile, like it, that's going to come down to what system you're using, and to be honest, that's a margin of error at that point.
Sure.
Um, and we, it doesn't specify where you measure it, if you're measuring it from, like you said, the walking distance, or from the center of the property. So, we're looking at the policies in place with the general plan and the description of what we're looking for, when it's appropriate for, um, the suburban compact neighborhood to fit into a mixed-use environment. That's, we're trying to figure out, okay, how do we evaluate that? That's where we're coming from, and in this case, we're, that, we don't see that as reflective of a half mile.
Okay, so we see, we, we're, we're saying that, yes, we have a half, we say a half mile, but we don't really, in this case, that doesn't really fit, so we're not, we're going to not let it meet that criteria. My point is, in general, either it meets the criteria or it doesn't. We can't, and inconsistently, we can't say one time it meets the criteria and the next one application it doesn't. These things, hey, they're, either they meet the criteria, point five oh, or they don't, miles, or they don't. We can't go back and forth saying that sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't. This isn't necessarily a Hyde Park problem, this is a, our problem, that we have to figure this out, because these seven criteria are in somewhat of a mess, because we, we continue to say no to things, or say yes to things, with different criteria within those seven criteria, and we need to stop, we need, we need to put ourselves in a position where we're always reflective of what either the letter of the law, the general plan is, or what practically makes sense. And I understand that practically, it's a half a mile, not really. It's more than that. But if we're going by the letter of the law, of the, of the general plan, this meets the criteria. So, I got a lot more, but I'm not going to do it, my time is up, but I just wanted to get that point across first. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, sir. To the staff. Uh, did you get any answer from the applicants on these criteria that you, you, you have concerns about?
Uh, yeah, they, they've responded when, um, submitting the response letters to referral comments, yes.
So, how many of them are eliminated?
How many are, what?
Concerns are eliminated.
Oh, they've done what they can, I would, to address concerns, but as far as where we're at, that's what I showed with, um, the...
Okay, these are not...
Yeah, they're, those, the criteria are not met at this time.
These are not met, the seven of them?
Yeah.
Okay. This is what I'm asking you, out of those seven, you did not get any, get any response from the applicant, that how they're going to solve, or how they're going to answer your concerns?
They've, they've responded, and that's where we're at today, is their response is what we have today. I can, I'm not...
You, did, did you talk about it here? Their response?
Not, not their response, I'm talking about the proposal itself is reflective of their response.
Oh, oh, okay, I got it. But you did not directly get, uh, very simply, and I just wanted to find out if they did anything about these, uh, concerns. Your concern is my concern, because that's how I found out concerns. So, before I go any further, thinking about it, I want to know if they have answered your concerns.
Not fully, but they have been working on it. Um, like, for example, they've increased the number of affordable units.
Okay, but not, there's still quite a few left.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. That, that's what I want to know.
Commissioner Combs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Bryce, you mentioned, uh, something about the, uh, the tree save, and I know you've got someone from NRT around. There was some discussion about potential methods to mitigate, uh, and I know that there's, there's a mass grading plan, I know, that's already in process, and I know the topography of the site is such that it requires mass grading. What are some examples of things we can do to further mitigate some of that, that loss of vegetation? And my particular, um, avenue of inquiry is the, um, the landscape buffering along Belmont Ridge, for example. I know we've got, we've got a buffer there, um, we've explored this elsewhere. Just be curious to hear from NRT, things that, perhaps that, or other things we can do to kind of help mitigate some of that.
I'll let Jen Herr, um, who's on the line from NRT, respond to that. Jen, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Commissioner Combs. Um, so, conservation is always a first priority, um, but when that is not viable, um, a second option would be the provision of additional tree canopy onsite, um, so additional large canopy trees incorporated into enhanced road corridor buffers, as you mentioned, so perhaps increasing that buffer width and providing additional large deciduous trees, um, also incorporating or providing commitments to provide additional trees in the open spaces and, um, park spaces onsite. So, that, that could be an option, um, also, the provision of additional, uh, street trees, as long as adequate soil volumes are provided to ensure the viability of the tree canopy onsite.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm running out of time here. Bryce, just ask you one or two quick more questions, um, regarding, uh, pedestrian safety improvements along Broadlands. I know we have, um, and we've dealt with this elsewhere, where we've put in an ask for some sort of enhanced crosswalk, something with, with pedestrian safety improvements, and it being subj, subject to a warrant study and then VDOT approval. Can you just sort of walk us through, again, what that process might look like here?
So, I'll let, um, Dustin with DTCI kind of explain that, because I know that there's some changes upcoming with that. Dustin, are you on? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Bryce?
Dustin, you'll need to speak up.
Okay, um, so the, the process for that, the first, the first thing we would do is submit a crosswalk justification study to VDOT, and that will basically give us approval to put in the crosswalk itself. Uh, it doesn't actually get into the, the types of treatment for that, so it'll, it'll basically just say that they're okay with, with us moving forward with the design of a crosswalk. After that, it will go into design, and then we would work with the guidelines that are available to, to design it, and there could be an array of options available. Um, just looking at it from the, from kind of a high level, at their policy, and trying to anticipate what they may approve, it's likely not going to be an unsignalized, like, not likely going to be just a crosswalk with nothing else there. Uh, it's probably, we're anticipating at least, uh, some type of flashing beacon, and, um, it could even be some type of red stop control. It wouldn't be a full signal, a conventional signal, um, but it could be a pedestrian-activated stop control. Uh, but VDOT does, doesn't have guidelines that are very solid in that area yet, but we have heard that they are coming out with those soon, but that's, uh, speculative at this time. That, does that help?
It does, yeah. Thank you very much. And thank you, Bryce.
Vice Chair Salma.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Bryce, so, um, as, as it relates to not fitting into an infill policy for this, um, is that, can you, can you maybe discuss that in more detail? Broadlands is pretty, this is part of the Broadlands master plan, correct? This is part of the initial rezoning for the entire Broadlands area?
Yeah, there was someone, yes.
Okay, so, that's eighteen hundred acres, and this is fifty-eight acres, so this is three percent of the master plan, so does that count? Wha, what level does it not become an infill, or does become an infill?
So, what we look at is the, um, general plan guidance. It doesn't look at it in terms of percentages, but in terms of general, um, site, like strict sizes. So, for infill, twenty-five acres or less. When we look for something to be held to the strict use mix, we relax it on twenty acres or less. And then, there's also the, um, location. So, in this case, yes, there's existing development nearby, um, whereas if you have like a five-acre parcel next to nothing, it'd meet the size criteria, but not necessarily the location criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to follow up on the DTCI questions that Commissioner Combs was asking. Um, we, we talked about a crosswalk. Where is that crosswalk that we were referencing? Where across Broadlands Boulevard does it land?
So, there are three possible locations for that. I actually thought I had it. So, there are three possible locations on, um, Broadlands. Dustin, do you want to speak to how that would be worked out?
Yeah, so we, we were working with the applicant on, on positioning or locating the crosswalks where there would be the bus stop, the future bus stop, because, um, we don't believe that the crosswalk will be approved by VDOT unless it's, unless it's serving that bus stop. So, they could, so we wanted to study three different locations and asked VDOT to give us that potential approval to, to possibly move forward with, at least one of the three, potentially up to two, which is written in the proffer, um, for up to two. The, we chose the, obviously, we chose the two intersections, which seem logical. The, the reason we chose the one in the middle was because you have less lanes to cross as a pedestrian, and there's a median refuge, and that's sort of a backup, uh, location in case we can't get the desired traffic control devices that we would like at the intersection. So, that was kind of our thinking when we chose these three.
Dustin, does the fact that there's already a twenty-year-old proffer for a light, um, on that most western spot play into this? I understand the original Broadlands plan had a trigger once there was commercial development on the current, the parcels we're talking about, to put a light in, um, at Broadlands Boulevard in Glebe View.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to defer to Lou Moserak on that.
I can actually speak to that. So, there was a proffer with the original, um, Broadlands approval to be timed based on the development of an office park, which is what it was planned for.
Right.
Um, so, that, as you said, that's never come to fruition. Um, however, when DTCI looked at the traffic study, this segment at Broadlands Boulevard is so far off from ever needing, um, a traffic signal, that's why that conversation did not come up about trying to continue that proffer. Additionally, again, they looked at the expected trips when looking at that traffic, the, um, traffic study, and it's just, it, we don't anticipate that it's warranted. Uh, Dustin or Lou, did you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I would just say that the, the traffic study does show that the levels of service would, would be satisfactory without any kind of signal, so, and there's no history of crashes, so, um, VDOT would likely not support the, a signal.
Well, there's currently no reason for a pedestrian, except if they're going to Clyde's, to go across that road, um, and a lot of people will tell you that they don't cross it because of the speeds that are traveled. So, I think that as we put amenities up there in a community, and people are expected to go back and forth, we're going to need to revisit this, so I'd be hesitant to let go of a signalized crosswalk. Whether it belongs at Glebe View or Education is, is a discussion I think we need to have, because I don't know that we want to be pushing people into the southern part of the existing neighborhood on Glebe View. I think we would like to keep them maybe up there by Education Circle, and that kind of creates a break. Um, I, I can't imagine that this is not going to warrant a light if we have one just to the east on Broadlands Boulevard near the Lidl. Um, how on earth that was needed when you're going to put seven hundred and ninety-five units here and it's not? Um, I, I, I have concerns about that. Um, to another topic, one of the criteria not met is, um, is the, uh, the, I always called the exceptional design guidelines, um, but you said the more definition and specificity on the tri-packs could meet that, could take care of that?
Yeah, so, right now, the tri-packs, from what I recall, are basically described in the statement of justification, but we would want some specificity in the proffers or their design guidelines, specifically saying how that's going to function, what it's going to look like, instead of just saying multifamily stacked.
Gotcha, so that would be enough to meet one of that criteria, probably?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
Um, thank you, I apologize for, uh, I ran along that, I tried not to run along the first time, so a quick question, um, about this bridge, Bryce, is it, wait, so we're saying that it's not a capital need, it's not in the CIP? I thought it was in the CIP under CTV, I'm sorry, or either, it's in the CTV, right, so it's, is it not in the CTV?
So, this is where there can be, easily be some confusion. We've got the 2019 county-wide transportation plan, which it is inferred in because it's planned, that plan, um, specifies that Belmont Ridge Road has shared-use path all along that segment, um, including over the Greenway. It doesn't say, "Yeah, you should put a bridge there," it says that there should be It doesn't say, yeah, you should put a bridge there. It says that there should be pedestrian accommodations. So that's the long-range plan for 20 years in the future. Of course, sooner would be better. However, when we look at the capital of cities, when we're considering a credit, we're looking at the capital needs assessment or the capital improvement program, where the board has specifically said, okay, here's the money we have for the next few years. What needs need to be taken care of right now? And this is not one of them. There is funding set aside for sidewalk improvements and addressing linkages. But this is not identified in the capital improvement program as one of those critical ones.
But it could become critical if there were 800 homes here.
I'll, I'll just say that it's, it's not in there right now. I, I can't speak as to whether or not it would get used. I'm saying that it's a pedestrian, it's a missing link at this time. I can acknowledge that, but it's not. It doesn't meet the policy in term, from staff's review and perspective, it does not meet the policy. However, the board obviously can make that decision, that financial decision.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Before we move on to our applicant, Bryce, I just have one question. And it's not necessarily directly related to the project, but I'm just curious. Going back to the conversation around this seven criteria. You know, as, as many of us know, that has been an ongoing conversation in terms of whether or not the county should take another look at that portion of the comp plan. And, you know, we've had a robust discourse about it during our leadership meetings between the Planning Commission leadership and the board leadership. And so one of the outcomes of the last conversation about this was that the board leadership was going to ask the staff to take a look at this and come back with some recommendations. Has that, Jackie, is that underway?
Sure. We've taken the item to T-Lock twice now, so we've, maybe even three times. But we have talked to T-Lock about these specific seven criteria. That item is going back to the board and then we might initiate a CPAM to clean up this criteria in the plan. So we have been talking about this actively.
Okay, thank you. And for those of you, I, I should have done this on, before I started speaking. Because you, how would you know what I'm talking about? So I'm going to speak for myself. I and some others are of the thought that because development sites are unique and site-specific in most cases, it's very difficult to ever have each and every one of those seven criteria on each and every site. And so there've been very rare cases when you've been able to touch every base in that regard. And so I think in their infinite wisdom, the, the board has decided to ask the staff to take another look at it now. Jackie's smarter than me every day of the week and probably twice on Sunday. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how that all turns out. Thank you, Jackie. All right. Applicant, you got a, you got a presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Hayes, members of the planning commission. My name is Colleen Gillis. I'm pleased to be before you tonight on behalf of Hyde Park. I'm really pleased to be behind, before you tonight on Hyde Park because I can't tell you how much work has gone into this application. We have been in extensive coordination and collaboration with both the Ashburn District Office, as well as the Broadrun District Office, with the Broadlands HOA, with the Broadlands Ad-Hoc Committee. There have been multiple community meetings that have been held. And so this is really the product of a lot of fingerprints, a lot of elbow grease to get to where we are tonight. And so I'm really pleased. Next slide. So Bryce heard you where the property is. It's really at the western edge of Ashburn, right? It to its western edge is Belmont Ridge Road. To the north, you've obviously got Gruce Creek Village. Beyond to the north of that, you've got the Belmont Green Shopping Center that's up there. This is an opportunity, we think, because of its location, because of everything that's been developed around it. We think it's an opportunity to really, to complete some, to do some amazing things for this area of the county in terms of what we've heard about already tonight, transportation, pedestrian improvements, amenities for the Broadlands community and other things. And we think it's a unique opportunity. Next slide. And when we look at this block, when we look at this area, we look at the area really specifically within the area of Clayborne Parkway and Belmont Ridge Road. And think about this block in particular. We look at this as a mixed-use block. This is all planned for suburban mixed use. And when you see the Loudoun County Public Schools building immediately to the east, Clydes, the future-to-be here, Ashburn Rec, Rec Center, which is an amazing, amazing amenity, hugely important to the people who live in this area and some other uses. We look at this and we look at this as creating that super block that is suburban mixed use. Next, next slide. But what is the project? Obviously, Bryce did a good job of overviewing what the project is, but here, just one more time. 795 homes roughly split 60/40 between townhome product and multifamily product. We're going to talk about a lot of these amenities and the benefits of this proposal. But I want to, before we move off of this slide, emphasize, we're talking about seven different product lines within this development. Seven different product lines. I've heard the commission, I've heard the board of supervisors say, don't give me a cookie cutter community. This will not be a cookie cutter community with seven different product lines. And before we get off of this, I've also heard this commission and some of you in particular, talk about parking. When you look at this plan at this scale, it may not jump out at you. But I want to emphasize, this plan has 43% more parking than is otherwise required by the ordinance. Now, I know some people are going to say the ordinance is a terrible standard. It's not enough. But it's 43% more than what the ordinance requires and we can talk about that. Next slide. So like I said, diverse housing. These are images of our housing from the design guidelines from the proffers. And you can see in the upper left, all of the different types of products that are within here. I want to point your attention to the image on the bottom. These are proffered to face Broadlands Boulevard. These are sticks of townhomes that are designed to look like single-family detached houses. This is, we think, the definition of innovative. This is the definition of, of creating something that is spectacular. And they're designed this way so that they complement and reflect the single-family detached houses on the south side of Broadlands Boulevard. Next slide. And like I said, we met extensively with the Broadlands HOA Board of Directors and an ad hoc committee with Broadlands. We worked with them over many, many meetings to identify the sorts of amenities that would be appropriate for this neighborhood. For every, things that don't currently exist in many, many ways in Broadlands today. Off-leash dog park, huge lord, large north and south green parks. In total, those two parks are three acres. Three acres of parks just in the center and those are sizable parks. You can imagine somebody throwing a frisbee. To respond to some of the NRT comments that we heard earlier, we're happy to discuss putting additional plantings in here. And we're happy to discuss increasing the caliber of the trees that would be planted in here so that they come out of the ground much more mature than, than what you would otherwise expect. We've got a one-mile loop around the perimeter of the community. What an opportunity for people to stay in the neighborhood and get a one-mile walking loop. Tennis and pickleball, restored Brandon, but we'll talk about the Brandon Barn Event Center and then the Community Clubhouse and Pool. This plan reflects 15 acres of open space. 26% of the plan is open space. The suburban compact neighborhood place type only requires 15%, so it's 11% more than what would be required by the place type. Next slide. We think that this community clubhouse is the gem of the community. This is an amazing opportunity, a different type of clubhouse, a different type of, of pool than exists in Broadlands today with the splash pad and the zero entry and the infinity edge. Next slide. But inside of the building, we've paid as much attention to that. So you see some of these things, fitness center, yoga room, lounge area. But I point your attention to the bottom right of the slide. We have focused on a resident work area that is, for all intents and purposes, a we-work space within that community clubhouse for all of us who are working home at home and want to change a pace and something else to look at. Next slide. And then we've got this, this barn. This is a barn that Clydes purchased from Vermont. It's in storage and we would reconstruct it on the site to create a wedding space, an event space. And it would be outfitted with a catering kitchen. This is all in the proffers. I'm going to reflect what, what Chair Hayes said, that this was an opportunity to marry west and east and we couldn't agree more. Next slide. But we would be tone deaf if we didn't say, if we didn't reflect that this plan has a lot of affordable housing here, right? 15.6% affordable housing, 124 affordable units. These units are administered by the Office of Housing. These are ADU units, unmet housing needs units. We are covering the entire spectrum from 0 to 100% with these units. And we're committing to minimum sizes of those units so that you don't get something that's, that's small and, and very different out of those affordable, programmatic affordable units. But additionally, and staff hasn't reviewed this, this was something that we've decided to do since the staff report came out. We're making a commitment to max unit sizes on our other, on some of our other units. Next slide. And so what you can see here is, is that we're actually putting our money where our mouth is and saying we're creating affordable by design maximum units. 263 of our units, you can see how it's laid out in the table there, will be capped in terms of their size to be roughly 2,000 square feet or smaller. When you incorporate the 70-unit Lytec Building that we're programming in the northeast corner of the site, this means 41% of the project. 41.8% of the project is affordable, either because it's a smaller unit or it's one of those ADUs or UNU units. Next slide. Lot of attention tonight was paid to crosswalks. This is that crosswalk plan across, across Broadlands Boulevard. We have committed in the proffers to these being pedestrian activated. In the interest of time, I'm going to move on, but they have been committed in the proffers to be pedestrian activated. Next slide. And then additionally, the Greenway pedestrian bridge. This was something that Supervisor Turner asked us to look at and to see if we could do. We dug in, we analyzed it, and there is a commitment in the proffers right now to do this Greenway pedestrian bridge. We, it is a missing link. We think it's really important and we welcome your feedback on it. Next slide. I'm going to skip through the comp plan. You all know the plan. Next slide. Is, the property is planned for suburban mixed use, obviously. Next slide. To do suburban mixed use, we need retail. It is not mixed use without retail. What you have on the right here is the, is an excerpt from the Department of Economic Development Retail Study that was completed in 2016. If you look at the numbers that are underlined, you can see that the supply in 2016 was more than the anticipated demand in 2025. And this was before COVID happened and we all started getting everything off of Amazon and on, online retailers. Next slide. But in 2016, we even knew it was too much. And it says, by 2025, in this area, in the Broadlands area, retail in the neighborhood, goods and services and food and beverage categories will still be oversupplied. Doing suburban mixed use here is not possible because of this. Next slide. The commercial that is possible, unfortunately, is data center. Data center is by right. It's PDOP by right property today. And we can do also a drive-through, fast food use as well on the property. Now, we think that this is not the professional, preferable development option, although it is an option to the developer. Next slide. Next slide. Yeah, next slide. Bryce went, so you can go back. Bryce went through the criteria. Per the staff report, go back two slides. Per the staff report, we're meeting three and a half of the criteria. And I think you all have identified a number of the criteria that we also agree we think we meet. Next slide. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. Obviously, we're doing a lot of affordability here, especially with those size commitments that staff to its, in its defense, has not had an opportunity to review. We think we meet this with this addition. Next slide. And then we also obviously think that we meet the, the bus route criteria, being on a transit line. Next slide. We also really believe that we, that we meet that proximate to employment options in a complementary mix of uses. Being within walking distance of the Ashburn Rec Center and the Clydes and the LCPS Building and the Royal Farms and the Lidl. This is that complementary mix of use. Is it in a town center? No, but it's 300,000 square feet of walkable, walkable development. Next slide. And then we think that we're missing that, meeting that missing middle housing expectation that the county has been so vocal in wanting to see from us. Doing this all while still preserving 26% open space. Next slide. We're happy to get into the natural resources comments and, and dig in on those. There's a, as, as Commissioner Combs identified, we've got significant slope challenges that make this difficult. But we've really tried to be as innovative as possible. And like I said earlier tonight, we're happy to increase the caliber of the trees and add additional plantings to those large areas of open space. Next slide. In short, this is a project that provides diverse attainable housing and addresses the missing middle. Total, in total, we've got 15.6% affordable housing that would be programmatic, 41.8% of new units under 2,000 units. And we're doing all of those, this in the context of providing amazing new amenities for the Broadlands. The clubhouse, the pool, the barn, the event center, et cetera. And again, with the pedestrian bridge, the pedestrian safety improvements and the open space, we think that this is a project that you all can be proud of and we'd really like to bring to this property. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners questions? Vice Chair Salmond.
Thank you. Two questions. Thanks, Colleen, for your presentation. The first one relates surprisingly to parking. I know you're like, no way.
I'm shocked.
But I think there's some areas of this, this concept development plan that looks very tight. That along with the fact that you have, you have Z-mods that reduce the yard setbacks and things like that, leads me to ask the question, regardless of whether you're going to have under-townhome parking, is there going to be enough space to park a car in the front yard and the, on the, on the driveway with your setbacks?
Sure.
Realizing that most everybody else nowadays wants a Ford F-350 that's 26 feet long.
I don't want a Ford F-350. Can we, I'm not everybody. Can we go to slide 45, Bryce? So I will say, at this scale, at this level, and looking at the overall prop, plan, it is very difficult to see all of those parking spaces. I do know that, that one of Supervisor Turner's staff members did count all of the, the spaces. And we can absolutely dig in and look at that. What we did with this is we identified various neighborhoods to identify how much parking was in each one of those neighborhoods. So to, to your point, you know, is there, there are areas that look tight. And you can see in all of those, we're not only putting garage spaces, all of our townhomes have integral garages. But we're also identifying in those places where there isn't, you know, a full driveway. And that's happening with those yellow townhomes in some cases, not all cases, on the western edge of the property. Then in those cases, we're providing ample off-street parking for visitors and, and additional cars that might, might live there. I'm happy, Commissioner Salmond, to sit down and look through all of this. But it's obviously a lot to go through in a very short period of time. We also have within the proffers, which I believe is a brand-new commitment, proffers to minimum number of off-lot spaces and also commitments to exceed the ordinance by certain amounts.
Got it. Second question is related to the pedestrian bridge.
Yes.
Sounds like a great idea. What does the pedestrian bridge give you from this perspective? I think it gives you access to additional retail and things of that nature.
Right.
My, my question in the end is going to be this, because I, it looks like I'm going to run out of time. If it's such a great idea and it meets, helps you meet some of the requirements of the suburban compact neighborhood, does the county need to give you credit for that? Because I don't think we should and you could probably argue me to a percentage. But I, I think 10 million is a lot of money for something that's benefiting this particular application that it couldn't do any other way.
So, so obviously, it's an expensive bridge when you, and, and one that, for all the other bridges and all the other crossings of the Greenway up and down, they include pedestrian, pedestrian access. And so it is expensive because it wasn't done in the first place. And so as a result of that, I hear you. It is an expensive bridge and we look at the, the amenities that already exist that are walkable within that quote-unquote "super block" or even to the east at the Broadlands Village Center as, as really amazing. This was a request that was posed to us by Supervisor Turner and so that's why we dug in. So the other thing of note is, is that the way that our proffers are drafted, we are not putting a number out there. It would be a dollar-for-dollar credit for, for that. We anticipate that it would be, that it would cost between, you know, up to $14 million. It could end up being less and that would result in a cost savings to the county as well.
Okay. And just a comment for staff, I'm assuming we're going to send this to work session. Can we calculate their meeting the requirements or not meeting the requirements, A, with the bridge and then B, without the bridge? Because I think it would tell me that they probably need the bridge to meet some more of their requirements. So if we were to take it out, that would, they would get dinged on more things than if they were to add it in.
Are you talking about the criteria for evaluation under the compact?
Yes.
We, part of the reason I mentioned it being exactly .5 miles or over was to kind of explain, like, even with the bridge, we don't see that as helping meet a criteria. So you take it out, it doesn't.
It doesn't ding them any worse than they already, already are. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Combs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleen, on the, the affordable units, you've got 15.6% affordable, another 25% which are market rate affordable by design. Can you, on, I, one of these pages of the CDP, can you kind of point to us where those units are going to be interspersed? Are they going to be sectioned off in, in their own land bay?
Great question.
Integrated throughout the, the site?
Great question. So the yellow units that are So, the yellow units that are, that are closest to Belmont Ridge Road, those are, those are units that are a footprint of twenty by thirty, right? So think of those as, you know, six hundred square feet per floor. The first floor would have two garage spaces integral to it. Those, we are committing to virtually all of those units, except for the end units, being that small of a footprint. So all, so almost all of those are committed like that. The other area we're committing to sizes, there are two other areas. One, there are hot pink buildings closest to the ramp onto the Greenway. You see two, thank you so much. And so those two condo buildings are also, we are also committing to those units as being capped at a maximum size of eighteen hundred square feet. And then the other ones are all of the purple units and the peach units. Yep. Those stacked townhomes, those stacked units, those are the, the purple are the tri-pack, and the peach-colored units are the two-over-twos. And those would be capped at seventeen hundred square feet on average. That language has existed in other proffers before, so I heard you. That's, that's, that's language from other proffers, so it allows you to, to flex a little bit, so, yeah.
Is the tri-pack, that's the two-over-one that
Yes.
we've seen elsewhere, that's a patented
Yes.
housing product? Okay.
Exactly. Exactly. So, we've identified those. Obviously, for the units that are fronting on, on Broadlands Boulevard that are intended to replicate a single-family detached house, those are, those are going to be larger than two thousand square feet.
And you've indicated on, on the CDP where driveways?
We have not indicated on this, on the CDP where driveways are, but we have indicated that all of our townhomes will be rear-loaded.
Okay. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Frank.
Thank, thank you. While we're kind of breaking down, this is a great visual to have up. Which are the units that require the height exception? Is that the multifamily only?
It's a great question. So, we, so yeah, so the ones that are at, at needing that sixty-foot height are exactly those hot pink buildings. You've got the two condominium buildings that are adjacent to the Greenway, and then also that Lytec building that is in the northeast corner of the site. It's like a dog leg. Those are the ones that need the height exception. One other thing that staff hasn't, hasn't yet reviewed is is that we're willing to commit to a maximum of four stories for the remainder of the project, with the slight exception that to the extent that there are rooftop decks on any of these, that there would be, there could be something to get up to that rooftop deck that wouldn't count. It wouldn't be a full, a full story of, of development.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to the, the two-over-two thing and the average max size. The two-over-twos, by definition, by their design, is that the upper-level unit is going to be significantly larger or lower because of the garage spaces in the stairwell. So, the upper levels are gonna be twenty-six hundred square feet, no matter what you do, unless the lower levels are, I don't know if it's mathematically possible to have the, the lower levels be any smaller cuz you have to be at least, at least eighteen, at least twenty-two feet wide to accommodate the garages and the stairwell. So, there's really no way to make the upper-level two-over-twos any smaller. So that average size is really driven by the lower levels and the tri-packs. Tri-packs, whatever you wanna call them. The upper-level two-over-twos, if we're talking about affordability by design, at the aforementioned Goose Creek, right now, the lower-level two-over-twos they're building are starting at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The upper ones, I, I assume are seventeen million dollars. And like, like Commissioner Frank, we do this for a living. There's, that, that, now, now there's no longer, that's not a thing. The upper-level two-over-two is not a thing when it comes to affordability. So really, we're, we have to be talking about just the tri-packs, the lower two-over-twos, although like I said, five-fifties we're starting today in a neighborhood that's really, you have to cross Sicklin Road, which is just as bad as crossing Broadlands Boulevard. And so, we, I, I wanna figure out what the actual number of affordable-by-design number of units would be because the upper-level two-over-twos aren't gonna be affordable by design. So that's something that it should just go to work session. I guess it's sort of a question now, but really a, let's, let's dig into that when we get to, to a work session. Should that's where we go? So we can understand how many of these truly would be affordable by design outside of the ADU, county-administered ones.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And you can answer if you want, but I don't think there's much of, more of a statement.
I think, I think there's more maths to be done and more demonstration to be done than, than we can do tonight.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, sir, thank you. You were asked a bit where are the affordable housing is? And your answer was square footage.
For one of them.
Yeah, but could you tell us, or tell me anyway? Could you point them, what areas are the affordable housing?
Yeah. So the affordable housing is, thank you, Commissioner Miller. Yeah, I mean, the affordable housing is in the northeast corner of the site with the Lytec building. There's seventy units there. Then there's a number of units that are dispersed within the two-over-two and the tri-pack units. Additionally, there's affordable units within those condominium buildings. Those are podium-parked, elevator-served condominium buildings. And then we anticipate the vast majority of the, the townhome, the townhome affordable units being located in those yellow units on the west side.
Affordable housing, what are their prices gonna be?
We don't know what their prices are going to be, any more than we know what inflation's gonna do and
Be affordable.
Right.
To be affordable.
Right. So with regard to the ones that are ADUs and unmet housing needs units, those prices are going to be set by the Office of Housing. They make the determination based on, based on average median income, area median income. They make the decision as to what you can sell those units for. Those units that we talked about, those hundred and twenty-four, I guess it actually was said to be about forty-four of them. No. Sorry, sixty-four of them end up being, end up being those, those sorts of units that the county sets the price for, and they end up being more or less a gift because the developer does, the builder does not make the money that it costs to build it back in the purchase price. The other units that are affordable, quote-unquote, "by design," those units are, are market-controlled, and we're, we're designing them to be smaller so that they stay more affordable.
So we don't know really exactly where they are?
I, I don't think anybody knows what prices are gonna cost by the time that we build out this.
So we actually don't know whether we're gonna get affordable or not. It's, it's gonna be the market-bearing thing, whatever it is, decided at. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Let me ask a follow-up question to Commissioner Barnes, just clarity, first for myself and maybe for others. So, and this is new information for me. So, Ms. Gillis, so, am I correct? You said that on the affordable units, affordable-by-design units? First of all, on your site, what is the square footage of these so-called affordable-by-design units?
So, if we can go back, maybe it's easiest to do it this way, is we, if we can go back to slide eleven?
I know you got other ones, just, we can start, just use those for example.
I just figured that'll be easier cuz it's
Yeah.
Yeah. And I wanna make sure I don't misspeak, my print is quite small on my paper. So, this is what we're talking about here. The stacked multifamily, which is everything in that, that, the peach and the lavender. Eighty of those units, maximum average size would be seventeen hundred square feet. In the attached multifamily, which are the hot pink buildings in the top-left, yes, thank you. Sixty-four units, maximum average size would be eighteen hundred square feet.
When you're saying stacked multifamily, you mean?
Two-over-two.
You're talking about two-over-two, and one of, so you got two units there. And so one unit is seventeen hundred square feet, right?
To make that average work, one of those units has to be less than seventeen hundred square feet to allow for the, the units to be larger than seventeen hundred square feet in that top unit. As super, as, as Commissioner Miller mentioned, the bottom of a stacked multifamily unit has the garage as part of its square footage.
So I'm not asking the size of the structure.
Okay.
I'm asking the size of a particular unit.
Okay.
So do we know what that is? Is that, I'm, I'm assuming that when you say affordability by design, we're talking on a high level, seven hundred square feet, maybe eight hundred? Does anybody know?
So, James, you wanna answer this? I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to James Brothers, who's with the ownership team, who can describe.
Sure. And, and one clarification here, when we're talking about the eighty units, we're talking about the lower units. So we're not talking about the upper units in this commitment right now.
The lower unit is how many square?
That's what we're committing to. That's right. Which is typically, as Mr. Solomon pointed out, just around sixteen hundred square feet for that lower two-over-two unit. That's about the typical size.
So, so we're calling the affordably-by-design unit one-two-over-two?
The bottom level, correct.
Bottom level. So it's a two-story unit?
Correct. Or it's four stories total, two in each.
Right, so it is, how many bedrooms?
Three.
Three. And that's going to be about sixteen hundred square feet?
Correct.
Okay. Is that one come with a space?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And what do you think, you know, market, if that was at the market level, what, what would you typically sell that for?
That's probably, it's probably the mid-five-hundreds today.
Okay.
Which is about, it's about four and a half times area median income for a family of four. It's about four-point-two-five.
So now, if it wasn't affordable by design, if you were going to do your normal, well, your normal market-rate size, what is the size of that unit?
You know, we, one thing we took a look at was the average home sold, the average new construction homes sold in Loudoun County in the past year, which was about twenty-five hundred square feet. Right now, our average across this property is about twenty-one hundred square feet. So we're about four hundred square feet lower. Typically, the highest margin would probably be to pursue bigger townhouses, which would be the twenty-eight hundred to thirty-five hundred square feet units. And that's where you get away from that affordable element because your price points are in the, starting in the seven-hundred thousands typically.
Right. But, so if I, if I heard you correctly, the difference between your larger, full-market-rate units and these affordably-by-design units is about forty-five hundred square feet?
Yeah, the biggest unit would probably be thirty-five hundred, thirty-eight hundred square feet, which would be the biggest four-story townhouse. And so these would be about two thousand square feet lower than this, lower than that.
That's not bad. And, and where do they go out at on the outsell?
Michelle probably knows better than me, it would be seven, you know, probably in the seven, eight hundreds would be my guess. A four-story, three thousand square foot plus? Yeah.
Okay, okay. Wow. Okay. So now, the other part is that I did not know. I knew all, I mean, I knew most of that, I didn't know the size of your units. But now, Ms. Gillis, I heard you say that the county would tell you, would set the price. So, but the AMI, so if we say, if the county's objective is, you know, we say that, you know, we wanna see eighty percent AMI.
Right.
So that, that's a mathematical equation. That's not the county dictating you must sell at a certain number, right?
You're right, it's a mathematical equation. But the Office of Housing sets the price for ADUs and unmet housing needs units.
Really?
They set the price. Yep. And so, and so there is a formula, there is a spreadsheet. I am not the person to utilize it or to do the inputs on it. That's for, that's for a builder. They input how much the land acquisition costs, the land development costs, how big is the, how big, how many square feet is it? How many bedrooms is it? And then it spits out a number and says, "This is what you can sell that unit for." And that, that number is well lower than any number we've talked about tonight. So, from a market rate perspective, obviously, obviously, market rate goes for what the market is. The builder, at its core, you know, has to make up the cost for, for, for not making, not meeting its costs for those ADUs and unmet housing needs units.
And what do they give you in order to have that kind of authority to tell you how much you can, you can charge for your?
A smile. No, I'm just kidding. Like, no, honestly, I mean, it's, it's part of the ordinance that we've gotta do these ADUs in return. The expectation originally was that you would get
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the affordably-by-design, the unmet housing need based on the AMI. What do they give you?
Nothing.
So, in, in every other place in America, if I tell you, you can only sell this unit for this amount of money?
Right.
Then the delta between what you would typically
Right.
have in your pro forma
Right.
to sell it at a market rate
Right.
that gap, I'm somehow giving it to you, either in
No.
a trust fund amount or in Lytec revenue, but I'm not just telling you to take it on the chin.
Yeah.
Cuz how many units am I gonna get that?
The, if I may, I, I would, I would love to, to, to be able to turn to my clients and go, no, they're gonna make up the difference. It's not the way that it works. How the developers, how the builders make up that difference is is that those market rate units cost a little bit more to make up for the cost of development on, of those affordable units. And so, we can have a different conversation and a different night, not on the record, but there's obviously a push and a pull to getting additional affordable housing and keeping market rate units attainable because they get inherently more expensive to, to, to bear the burden of those additional costs as we increase the amount of affordable housing.
And that's why the affordable units are smaller than the market units, which flies in the face of what affordability in this country is supposed to be about.
Right.
It's supposed to be equity and equality in this, not, you know, you don't have a lot of money, so yours is smaller and yours is different.
Right, right.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can I make one point of clarification? Cuz I think you were asking her a question, I think you two might have talked past each other a little bit. I thought you asked her whether the county was setting the price for affordable-by-design units, and the county does not
Right.
set the price for those particular units. So, I don't think Ms. Gillis answered the question incorrectly, but based on what you said, I thought
They set the price for?
They set the price for the ADUs, which is, I think it's thirty to seventy right now. And then what, the, the spectrum from seventy to a hundred, which is what we generally call the unmet housing needs units, they set the price for those. But this idea of affordable by design is not
Right.
of any particular county program, that's just something that the developers come up with.
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Ms. Sednor's right.
So they set the price for
They set the price for
unmet housing need?
Right, so for this, basically, the spectrum from the zero to the a hundred of AMI, this idea of affordable-by-design unit, however, cuz I felt like, I thought you asked her whether or not the county was setting the price for the affordable-by-design unit.
So, no. What I asked her was, when the county says, "We want you to hit a certain AMI number," she says, I said, "That's a math thing." So, the area median income is what it is based on all the aggregate incomes in this, in this geographic area, right? And so then you can just do the percentages of it, right? So I said, and typically, that's just what you do. She says, "No, they have a spreadsheet and they tell you, this is the number, right, that you have to sell it at." And I said, "Okay, I've never heard of that before." And then she's, I said, "So they do that?" She said, "Well, on ADUs." I said, "What about the unmet housing needs?" She said, "Yeah, they do it there too." I said, "Okay, so they're telling you how much you can sell a unmet housing need unit for, right?" And she says, "Yes." Now, what I can extrapolate from the rest of the conversation is, in order to make that work and pencil as a developer, they have come up with a way to make it work by making these units smaller, cutting into the construction costs and other kinds of costs so that they can make their numbers work, right? But the end result is, yes, it's cheaper, but it's also a smaller product. And I've never heard of a municipality requiring somebody to provide a particular kind of a product at a certain level and not subsidize it.
Okay, so I, maybe I misunderstood. I thought I heard you ask her whether or not the affordable-by-design units were included in that calculation or that spreadsheet, and they are not, so I'm sorry.
No, that's not what I asked.
Okay, I apologize for my confusion.
It's, it's
Lot, lot of acronyms, lot of terms.
I'm a geek when it comes to this stuff. You don't have to be. All right, so I'm sorry, Colleen.
No, it's okay.
You didn't, you didn't want to go to my, my little weirdo class.
It's all good, it's all good.
So, all right.
Thank you.
So, any other questions, commissioners? Nope, all right. So, at this point, we will open up the public hearing portion of our meeting. I'm gonna get in trouble for that, that portion of the meeting. My wife told me stop causing trouble, so, she's watching, I'm gonna get in trouble. First speaker, Madam Secretary, do I have any additional speakers other than ones on this list?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so the first speaker who has signed up is Ms. Catherine Boone. Ms. Boone, are you here? Please come forward to either podium.
Good evening.
And you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Catherine Boone, I'm a Broadlands resident. I'm here tonight because I vehemently oppose the proposed Hyde Park development. I'd like to use my time tonight to touch on some of the points laid out in Supervisor Glass's letter. Supervisor, Supervisor Glass mentions that she will request an updated analysis from LCPS in September when they have the enrollment numbers for the next school year. Won't this be too late? I fear that this project will have been rubber stamped by the time we will see those projections. Furthermore, the calculation of three hundred and seventy-six children in nearly eight hundred homes seems improbably low. This number was calculated with twenty-nineteen enrollment numbers, and I believe a new estimate must be done using more current enrollment numbers. The twenty-nineteen study does not take into account the population gain since then, making it unreliable. Supervisor Glass mentions that she regularly receives complaints regarding noise, construction, lighting, and power lines from the communities located near data centers. Does she not anticipate similar complaints will be generated from a development of nearly eight hundred homes? The traffic study submitted is dated May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. It's my belief that an updated study must be conducted to reflect more realistic post-COVID numbers. It's well known that traffic was substantially decreased during the height of the COVID period, and the traffic study does not do justice to the actual current traffic road, traffic, our road C. The idea that we could make future plans based on a time when COVID pulled many vehicles off the road is completely unacceptable. Additionally, any current traffic study must take into account the projected traffic load the new county recreation center will bring, as well as the new Demont and Silver and Hillside at Broadlands housing developments that are under active construction. Supervisor Glass gives trip estimates with the number nine thousand nine hundred thirty-nine if the parcel was to be used as traditional office space. It feels disingenuous to have included this number since developing this as traditional office spaces is not being considered. The proposed Hyde Park development is estimated to generate four thousand five hundred ten daily trips. That is an unconscionably high number and one that is probably on the low end. Curiously, no data is given for daily trips estimated if this parcel were to be developed as a data center. Why is that? Surely those projections exist and were excluded from this letter. I find it hard to believe that that was an oversight. Supervisor Glass does say that there are most certainly opportunities for the developer to mitigate some of the pedestrian and transportation impacts, but will they? Is Loudoun County able to guarantee its residents that we won't be the ones footing the bills for expensive mitigation efforts such as a proposed over fourteen million dollar pedestrian bridge? My next points come from the County of Loudoun Department of Transportation and Capital Infrastructure Memorandum dated July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Transportation comments and recommendations, item six says, therefore, DTCI recommends the applicant provide for the installation and appropriate traffic control devices and pedestrian crossing to accommodate the crossing of Broadlands Boulevard, et cetera. We know that hundreds of kids would be crossing a very busy road. A crosswalk will not be sufficient. Who is going to pay for the tunnel or bridge that is needed here? Next, item thirteen. The twenty nineteen CTP states that all proposals for residential, institutional, and other noise-sensitive uses, adjacent or existing proposing, proposed arterial or major collector roads will complete a study of predicted noise to ensure forecasted noise falls within acceptable levels. This has not been done yet. The current widening of Belmont Ridge Road will only make this louder. Setbacks cannot be reduced and still have the acceptable noise levels. I plan to send these comments to the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Planning Commission, and look forward to their responses. I respectfully ask that this issue not be voted on until there has been an updated traffic study and there is a more current school enrollment figure. Thank you.
Thank you. You know what, in, in our chamber, we don't usually entertain clapping, but we're known for like the snapping and that type of thing? Or not the, no, the glad, what is it called? Jazz hands, I almost can't say that, but yeah, the glad, the jazz hands. But no clapping, please. Alina Burt. Thank you, Jackie, I couldn't remember the name.
Hi, everyone, my name is Alina Bird, Bert, and I'm a fourteen-year resident of Broadlands. We moved here to Broadlands from New York for the reasons that are going to be mentioned here. To live in this beautiful community with nature and trails and everything else. We did not move here to live in the high-density community that's going to have high impact on my children. As of late, I know Colleen mentioned Broadlands HOA representing us. I would like to reflect to you that we do not represent the community. Colleen and her team did not meet with Broadlands residents. Most Broadlands residents are against this high-density, high-density community. So the, it's difficult to predict the problems and the developing of high-density, of this high-density community on Ashburn. However, it's easy to predict a burden on our local roadways leading to increased traffic congestion and increased fatal automobile accidents. As Catherine mentioned, the current developments of Demont and Silverline, Ashburn Rec Center that's coming this fall, and the Hillside Park that's being developed near my house already going to have a high impact on our, on our road and our traffic. So an additional projection will be effected further developments on our primary schools. For example, the Loudoun County School Board revealed that Haveter Elementary in Aldi is expected to be overcapacity by twenty-four percent next year and forty-two percent for the next three years. Aldi is a very high-density developed community. There are hundreds of housing units, housing units in construction in Ashburn within a mile of this proposed development. Ostensibly, we will be overcapacity within the next few years. What these seven hundred ninety-five units do to an overburdened education system in Ashburn. I've lived here for long enough to remember when Loudoun County rezoned our schools multiple times, six months at a time, all of which led to development and construction and led to the Waxville Elementary. Sylvia Glass noted the need for affordable housing units as part of the proposal. Are there no ADUs and a half dozen new developments in Broadlands alone? There are several apartment complexes in Broadlands and more than a dozen townhouse, townhome developments. Ashburn is unique because it's already an achievable dream for everyone at any income level. My question is specifically for this development, how many of those units are going to be proposed for rent? And the impact on the community as well? So now let's talk about the inequality in goods and services that we cannot accurately predict, but it's highly likely to happen. So for example, I try to make an appointment for my children to see pediatrician or even a pediatric dentist, and I'm right now, months in advance, three months ahead in order to be able to get an appointment. So this problem is not unique to making appointments with physicians, it's overall going to impact all the goods and services. Higher-density housing doesn't solve the problem of additional office space, which is additional office space might. Again, hard to predict, but highly likely. We're on the cusp of not being able to provide essential services for our charged community. I assume that our law enforcement personnel, nurses, college students would prefer equitable access to the same services. I request for the board to deny this application for the proposed development or at least further evaluate all the aspects that are going to be brought up during the meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Eugene Yegir Remov. How'd I do?
You did good.
I did, I did okay?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay, you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm a, I'm a longtime resident of this community and I'm an American, an American citizen and a whole position with Navy Federal Credit Union. I've been, I've been living in this area for eight years. My house located at the corner of Broadland Boulevard and Stonewell Way. Recent years, I've been working from home and observing what happening on this section of, section of Broadlands Boulevard every day. Basically, can see my, the road from my window. The section of Broadlands Boulevard is already a super busy road. It has a big office building for Loudoun County Public School Administration with a few hundred employees, grocery store, big restaurant, Clyde's, and just across Clayborne Parkway, big shopping plaza, Broadlands Village Center. Many, many people are using this road daily from around communities coming from and to Belmont Ridge Road. This section, this section of Broadlands Boulevard road is curvy and on a steep hill, which creates a always dangerous driving condition. We have seen accidents, accidents on this section of the road last eight years. So, you know, there is a crosswalk next, next to Clyde's Restaurant, which is not possible to cross and if you, we, if the builder, if they will build another crosswalk, it's will not possible to cross anyway. Buildings have seven hundred ninety-five units in this small area and bringing around three thousand new residents, three thousand new residents to this area. We'll create an extremely high density of overpopulated area with unbearable heavy traffic. We have high probability of four accidents on this section of the road. Also, the new, the new high-density community across the single-family housing area where, where each house has approximately two-point acres doesn't fit well in established picture of Broadlands community and will look odd and less desirable area for living. But the designated area has approximately, approximately ten to fifteen thousand live trees, which will be removed during the construction. The communities around have little or no parks where kids, a family can walk and play. Why the richest county in the entire nation can't afford to build a few nice parks in this area. Instead of we seeing housing construction after construction and this traffic, and the traffic in Broadlands and Ashburn became extremely heavy and similar to high-density, dense populated area like Tyson's Corner, where we have lived six years prior moving to Broadlands. Heavy traffic and extremely busy roads, they were the reasons why we left Fairfax County. And now we're seeing the same is happening in these communities. Please don't approve this modification as we will create havoc and will increase traffics drastically and will make this area much less desirable for people who wants to live in a good, well-designed and family-friendly, friendly community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dawn Claussen.
Good evening, commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Dawn Claussen, I'm a twenty-one-year resident and homeowner in Broadlands. I'm a volunteer in the county on numerous boards. I actually have worked in the county, I've actually worked for the county as land acquisition manager for twelve years. I'm very familiar with the process, with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, and as, working as a developer in the past with a residential home builder. I'm currently a senior real estate consultant in the area. First of all, the applicant is a developer. We're not sure if they will be building the units that are going to be suggested if this, if this application is approved. The density is too high for this area. Currently, there's five hundred and fifty-three units being built within a two-mile radius by three developments. There's a hundred and sixty-three new units proposed by Van Meter on the same very road of Broadlands Boulevard that would be possibly approved and built by twenty-twenty-four, adding to further congestion on Broadlands Boulevard. Also, the Ashburn Community Center is due to break ground here in the next quarter with hundreds of parking spaces. Those couple of areas with development will all be done before this development would possibly be approved and built, adding more and more traffic and concerns of safety to Broadlands Boulevard. You currently can't cross at the crosswalk at Clyde's. There's drag racing going on all hours of the night with the cars, and to try to mitigate that with additional crosswalks, flashing or whatever the case may be, doesn't take along, away from that safety issue. Also, the community support. The developer has met with our Broadlands HOA board a number of times, and our board has gone ahead and approved an annexation if this was to be approved for residential. It does not have the support of the community residents. There's been one meeting that this developer has had with the community, short notice, held at Clyde's Restaurant. This meeting tonight, lack of participation, probably due to this being the day before a holiday weekend. Data center as an option, at this point, some of us would take a data center in this area because the congestion is entirely too much. This is not an infill parcel, this is not Fairfax, this is not Arlington. The quality of life in Loudoun County is why a number of us moved here and still continue to live here. But the safety issues and the density, the modifications due to the buffering along Broadlands Boulevard absolutely is less than the buffering that's going to be along Belmont Ridge Road. How does that impact our community and our residential community? When there's setbacks that are being modified or requested to be modified in an area where it faces residential across the street? I, I would hope that you would send this to workshop, and we will be reaching out as a community to you on numerous occasions along with the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, you represent PEC, so you will have six minutes if you are so inclined to use them.
I won't need it, but thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is Evan McCarthy, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Piedmont Environmental Council. My comments will focus on the proposed suburban compact neighborhood place type and the proposal to deviate from a mix of uses to a completely residential development. I also have a few concerns about the proposed natural resource protections. Development is appropriate for the site, given its surroundings. However, I urge the commission to consider if a compact neighborhood is the appropriate development type. Greater attention ought to be given to the unmet criteria, in particular to the mix of affordable housing and access to transit for such a dense development. As mentioned in the staff report, suburban compact neighborhoods are meant for small infill parcels, typically no greater than twenty-five acres. The proposed fifty-eight acre site represents a two hundred thirty-two percent residential district size increase. I urge the commission to consider if the proposal is too big to be considered infill development. I'd also like to comment on the proposed natural resource protections. Please consider the following as you continue to work with the applicant. Include the onsite wetlands in the tree conservation area. Expand that area to provide adequate tree canopy coverage. And please specify the type and location of low-impact development features. These should help to minimize the impacts to Beaver Dam Run. There are some attractive features with this proposal. The linear trail and pathways will help to increase the walkability in the area. That being said, I support staff's recommendation that the applicant commit to providing occupancy permit triggers for those key amenities. I recognize that there are other outstanding issues that need to be addressed and carefully reviewed. Consequently, I support staff's recommendation to forward the application to a work session. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alexei Stefan, is that correct?
I'll be ten years as me, Loudoun County resident. I'm a citizen and work at Tyson's Corner. So I do commute a lot when I need it. Luckily, last years I worked from home remotely. But, you know, I became Broadlands resident four months ago, maybe five months, doesn't matter. And I have attended only two meetings related to this project, which was on May ninth for the HOA and then HOA meeting. I definitely say that nor applicant, nor developer, surveyed people live in Broadlands community. They just straight worked with HOA commissioners and directors and actually, I, I understand this is our HOA fault, but. this is our HOA fault, but there is no sign that they have asked actual residency regarding this development. And you know, to be honest, I felt on all these meetings between the boards that all applicant or developer are threatening us to build this community with high density or to build a data center. I do not like both ideas because both developments will bring at least commercial grid power lines to the district because current layout is limited with power sources. For example, this development would require 10 megawatts of energy. Additionally, applicant doesn't say you all true regarding the units. They estimate 200 square meter, square feet less for the lower unit. So this would mean that the garage space would be so low so that there is no way to fit a car and trash bins inside. As a result, all cars will be parked outside. And according to this development, they say that there would be 2.1 parking spaces per single family. So what is 2.1 parking spaces, let's say for three-bedroom, single house? It's nothing. All cars will be parked outside, let's say on the Broadlands Boulevard, all in our community. I think that this project is too dense and, you know, isn't complete. It's like a splinter in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the next speaker is Avran Ram. Come forward, please, sir. And you have three minutes.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. So I've lived in multiple states, and when I moved to this community, like I came from Maryland and from Montgomery County specifically. And one of the biggest thing was I did like the affordability part and the fact that Broadlands represented a place where I could raise family. I spent a lot of time looking through the master plans and the community plans and things of that nature even before I bought a home. I didn't have much choices, and when I looked at it, there was a piece of land that was proposed for a George Mason University campus. And that was in 2009. It was a kind of a donation or something. And then I said, okay, there's a university, and then there was a hospital that owned this land. And I thought there would be an infrastructure of different kinds within the area. And what ended up happening now is every single piece of land that I thought would have different kinds of uses. I know as a county grows, things would change over time, but everything changing into just housing. And basically, Broadlands taking the brunt of the hit, basically, it gets all single families, all townhomes, and like within three streets, like Broadlands Boulevard, Turo Parish, and Demart Drive. I own a townhome of Demart Drive. That was the first home I bought. And last year, I had to buy a single family. Things were crazy. And it's a mathematical equation. A 1% drop in interest rate will raise home prices 13%. That's the math I saw. And it will drive itself back down and the interest rates goes up, which is happening right now. And affordability will be returned to the community. And for the purpose of the overall county, things will adjust itself shortly, I believe. It's not going, it's not Seattle. It's not SFO. There's not a whole lot of startups that are paying half a million dollar, you know, bonuses and stuff. And this county is not that. I can promise you that it's not happening. And home prices will readjust. And I expect my home prices, even though I paid a lot, I fully expected to drop, I'm fine with that. But we should not take a short-sighted approach to building housing because we think we need something in the next two years. It should be a very planned thing. A lot of thought needs to go into it. We cannot pack housing. And for example, this thing about building $550,000, 1,600 homes, if you do the math, I did the math, it would be equivalent to 1.1, 1.2 million dollars. So the builders are going to make out like a man in this case. They're going to be able to make more money off the homes than what they would be able to do even if they build a 3,500 square foot tunnel. And the last part of this equation for me is if they use it as a data center, the land is only worth 40, 45 million dollars. If they use this housing, it's 120 million dollars. So they are maximizing the value of the land, and I get it. I would do it if I owned the land. But if I'm a county, I would think about what the county needs in the long term and make decisions based on that, not on short sighted 50 cents here, 50 cents there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have two speakers who have signed up to speak remotely, the first being Mr. Jim Lynch. Mr. Lynch, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Lynch, you have three minutes. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm really concerned about the traffic. I believe that the applicant is way off on traffic. In particular, I'd looked at where they said that there's only three accidents that happened at Broadlands Boulevard, Education Court, and Stonewell Way. And they referred to it as the issues were only damage with property. So I'm not really sure what they mean by that, but I can tell you that I've seen someone come in and out of Education Boulevard and hit a motorcyclist. And that gentleman basically looked like a fly on the window. So I'm not sure whether they're getting these certificates or if they just say, we're sitting there for one week. So very concerned about that. As she mentioned earlier, the rec center and all these other goodies that are coming, well before they hope to, you know, build these houses, we've already going to increase traffic. Speed limit is definitely a concern. I also have a concern of, I live at the crow flies a football field away, and I noticed that there's an abundance of wildlife. Does the applicant have any plan for wildlife, how to remove wildlife, or are they just going to kind of come in there and just knock down trees and let them run and let it go as is? Reason I bring that up is in tranchery, Wegmans, when they came in there, they had a plan. They were going to come in. It was well-known that that was a lot of wildlife in there, and they addressed that. So a lot of questions that I have that doesn't seem to be answered by the applicant. So I think really touched on a lot of things. I wasn't really prepared. I have more questions than more of a statement, but I guess I kind of came into this game a little bit late. But again, too, the other thing is the infrastructure. Who's paying for the infrastructure? A lot of questions were asked about crosswalks, and it seemed that they were kind of behind the curve there. Well, we don't know. Might have a crosswalk, might not, maybe. Depends on VDOT. We'll see what they say. And I always see in this community and myself, being here for over 25 years, always see that it's always after the fact that, oh, we got to put a light up. We got to do this, got to do that. And who ends up getting to pay that bill? We do, the taxpayers and the developers, and they just kind of get their money and just kind of scoot away and.
I can give you 15 more seconds, sir.
I'm good to go. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Our final speaker, Ms. Myrna Lynch.
Yeah, Myrna Lynch. Thank you. My big concern, of course, then is the traffic on Broadlands Boulevard. The next concern will be the lights that we would have in here that I believe someone was saying that as soon as you come off of 659, you'd have a light on the next street. It's getting, I don't know. It takes a lot, it takes a hot wash for me to go to work to hit all these lights just coming down Broadlands Boulevard the way it is. That's one of the concerns. And the big one is just the number of homes and the number of people that that will be. And then, of course, then the traffic that will come with that. And then the other question I had is if it is approved and they do start working, where is the main entrance going to be? Is it going to be right here at this Education Drive? Or will it be off of 659? I, only because I'm right here at the corner of Stonewell Way. And what else was there? Oh, I noticed that there was a barrier, like on the map. I don't know what that means. Does it mean that there's going to be a wall built on Broadlands Boulevard? Or, you know, because there's a lot of, a lot of homes that back up to Broadlands Boulevard all the way up the hill, and they're going to be impacted by all this building, all this noise, all this construction. You know, the concern for them, what are they going to get? And I guess that's all, that's all I really have. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we had anyone else sign up to speak tonight?
No, Chair Hayes, that is everyone that we have.
Okay, before we close the public hearing, I'd like to invite anyone else who may be in the audience, who has not previously signed up, who might want to speak. You are not required to have signed up previously. If you would like to speak, you have but to come forward and take your opportunity. Seeing none, the public hearing portion of this meeting is now closed. I will invite the staff and the applicant to respond to any of the comments that were made by the speakers tonight. Would either of you like to do so?
I'll.
Staff first?
Yeah, I'll have, all right, two comments. One, regarding the school numbers. Supervisor Glass's offices kept me up to date as to some of their communications. So I apologize, I didn't realize that they, the school information that they had shared with the community was from the previous generation information. However, the staff report that was presented to you does have the current 2021, 2022 school information. Additionally, if the caller is still on the line, I just want to clarify, the applicant proposes two entrances, one across from Glebe View Drive off of Broadlands, and then one off of Education Court. That's all I've got.
Okay. And did you, did you have any response to, my understanding is that you may have had a response to some of the comments, or at least one of the comments from the applicant? This would be an appropriate time as well.
About, oh, about the affordable housing, just to clarify, I, I think Courtney kind of more or less said what I was going to say was that we, we only cover the market, or sorry, the ADUs. Once it's market rate, it makes no difference to the county. We have absolutely no control over that, as well as, I can put this in whichever the next report is, but the averages that they were showing are significantly higher than the minimums that they were proposing for the ADUs. For example, I forget the average that they showed for the multifamily stacked units, but the minimum in the profferies for an ADU is 500 square feet. So just for some clarification about where those sizes are going to come from, just for your awareness on that.
Thank you. Okay. Applicant?
Thank you. I'm just going to add a couple of the things, just for clarification, so that we're all on the same page. One, with regard to meeting with the community, we did have a community meeting. We invited the entire Broadlands community, as well as the Goose Creek Preserve community on the west side.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Ms. Gillis. So I'm not sure who that was, but I, I. Sir, I'm not, we don't typically have outbursts in our meetings. So I would appreciate it if you would refrain from that type of thing. We typically have a very civil meeting at the planning commission, and we don't interrupt people when they speak. Okay? Thank you. Ms. Gillis?
Thank you. So the date of the meeting was March 15th. It was held at Clyde's. The community was notified through the Broadlands HOA is the most efficient way to do that. Obviously, they've got access to everybody's emails, et cetera. We had approximately 40 to 50 people in that room, and so happy to share that that was in addition to the community meeting that Supervisor Glass and Supervisor Turner held. There was a question in terms of how many of these units will be for rent. It's just the 70 of the, within the Lytec building. There was a question about how quickly these units would be, would be on the ground. We anticipate from today a seven to 10-year build-out. This is not something, as much as we'd love magic, Jack and the Beanstalk beans that would make these happen overnight, the reality is, is it's going to take a process, and we anticipate seven to 10 years. With regard to the wildlife, we did submit an endangered and threatened species study, and we did not, neither staff nor we identified any endangered or threatened species on the property. We are paying for the crosswalks along Broadlands Boulevard. Additionally, there's a question with regard to the noise study. The noise study, as is, as is typical in Loudoun County, we are proffering to do a noise study. We are required to do it, and that is existing and currently in our proffers. With regard to traffic, there were some questions about the traffic study and whether or not it was up to date. Both VDOT and DTCI reviewed our traffic study, had no concerns. They did not have, they didn't recommend any improvements, any significant improvements that are not already proffered. There are no outstanding issues with regard to traffic. All intersections will operate at acceptable levels of service. Broadlands Boulevard, as per the traffic study, has ample capacity, and both VDOT and DTCI agreed with the study's findings. We both, we have our traffic consultant on the line. I know that Bryce has dusted in with DTCI, who I'm sure can also address those concerns. That study did incorporate and did utilize, did, did have as background traffic, the anticipated traffic from the Ashburn Rec Center. And it also obviously took into consideration the difference in traffic pre-COVID or in COVID and where we anticipate to be in the future. Finally, with regard to the schools, and I, it would be helpful to, I think, pull up slide 36, Bryce. So utilizing the statistics that were provided by, by the Loudoun County Public Schools, we pulled these slides together. So first off, very important to note, this site today does not cluster to, it's anticipated to go to schools other than where Broadlands children go today. Okay? So these are anticipate, this site is anticipated to go to the Ashburn Elementary Schools. What you're seeing here is the capacity or the utilization for the Ashburn, Ashburn Elementary Schools. And what you can see is that those Ashburn Elementary Schools are well under capacity. Next slide is the middle schools. They are also under capacity. And then finally, the high schools. Next slide shows that those high schools, except for Stonebridge High School, are under capacity. Now, I understand the concern. We understand the concern that we would be redistricted to be within the schools that the Broadlands students currently attend. Understood completely. Next slide. But what we did was we also pulled the capacity of those schools. You've got Hillside Elementary School, Milran Elementary School, Eagle Ridge Middle School, and Briarwoods High School. Those are all under 100% capacity. And I'm just presenting the facts. I understand the concern. We understand the concerns of the people who live in the community 100%, but we thought it was really important to level set with regard to this information. And with that, we really look forward to working with the commission to resolve any of your concerns, any of the outstanding issues, and we work towards, towards a resolution on this. Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioners, any final questions before I turn to Commissioner Combs? Okay. Commissioner Combs, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I move that the planning commission forward ZMAP 2021 0006, Specs 2021 0022, ZMOD 2021 0020, ZMOD 2021 0021, ZMOD 2021 0023, and ZMOD 2021, looks like it's missing a suffix, whatever that last ZMOD is.
21 2 0 0 2 4.
2 4, thank you. Hyde Park to a planning commission work session for further discussion.
Second.
The motion made by Commissioner Combs is properly seconded by Commissioner Frank. Commissioner Combs, do you have an opening?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair. It's very clear to me that this is a thoughtful application. I can see how much effort the applicant has put into it, how much effort staff has put into it, and how much input the neighboring community has had, and I appreciate all of that effort. We don't have a lot of parcels this size remaining in the county. The county has some pretty law.
pretty lofty goals. I think we would be remiss if we didn't send this to Work Session to really try to improve a lot of the comments that we heard tonight, touch on pedestrian issues, safety issues, connectivity to, to the neighboring community, um, and a number of the other issues that staff has identified. I look forward to doing that work, I hope, uh, the rest of the Planning Commission does, and for that reason, I hope you'd support the motion.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, so I will certainly support the motion, um, although I will comment that this is an interesting, um, parcel. It may come as a surprise to some, but this parcel is actually how and why I got involved in, um, county business, um, 17 years ago, um, when this was proposed to be a hospital. And it should have been, it was an ideal location for one, and a lot of people didn't want it there, didn't see the need, didn't think it was the right thing to do, said, "No, we don't want it there, we want wherever else will come in its place." And here we are, many, many years later, 58 acres of wooded land that's sitting there doing nothing, and unfortunately, this is not a, um, something or nothing, this is a something or something else. This project touches on a lot of areas that are in the general plan, that we have said as a community, it took three years to put it together, that we want, and one of those is more housing, um, compact neighborhoods, affordable by design, affordable by process, housing, and these are the things that this application gives us. While I was in favor of having a hospital there, the alternative now is not a hospital. The alternative to this project is data centers tomorrow. $150 million this land is worth, if not more, at the right time and right place. And we talk about the things we want and the things we don't want. I hear a lot of times up here, people don't want more data centers, they're on your house, I don't want to see them, I don't want them anymore, we make too much, we make so much money off of data centers that now we have to raise our property taxes because we're in imbalance of data center revenue. There's a lot of things that go on with that, and if you really want, don't want housing, then that is your alternative. This is not a, a, um, an idle threat, this is not a, we think we have a guy that's interested. This is, this developer could sell this land tomorrow for $150 million. So if the community, if, as we reach out further, everyone says, "No, we'd rather have green space and parks and open space and no housing, no data center," write a check. I don't think they care who gives them the money, but someone's gonna give them the money. And I say that strongly because while I think this application has some advantages and has some things we can work on, it generally meets all of the needs that we say we want as a county. Not necessarily the seven criteria of suburban compact neighborhood, but in general, this covers what we say we want as a county. So it'll go to Work Session, I hope, we'll work on some things, make it better for those who think it can be better, but ultimately, this comes down to a simple decision, do you want housing here, or do you want, I don't know, a million and a half square feet of data center? That's up to the community to decide, and we'll go whichever way you guys want. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I would like to see, uh, applicant working with the staff on those seven criterias that is in front of you, and all the concerns that the staff has, uh, I wanna, want you to answer those some way, uh, because that's who I, that's my information, the staff is what guides me. And, uh, then the people live around there, I always said that, I work for the people of the Loudoun County, I don't work for the developer or anybody else. I work for the people of, those who live there. And, uh, if you can eliminate some of their concerns, that will be very good for my vote. And, uh, that, that's, that's, that's what I want to see in Work Session, that, uh, when you come back, your answers will- Thank you.
Commissioner Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think Commissioner Miller covered some of where I was gonna go with this, but, you know, this, this is my neighborhood, and my home for the last 18 and a half years has been the Broadlands, so, um, while it is on the other side of the street from the district, it is, it is going to be a near and dear, uh, effort, um, to me. And there is almost no scenario where this land stays as it is today. I, I wouldn't venture to bet more than $5. Um, and, and I know that's not what a lot of people want to hear, I like it the way it is too. I, I'd like it to stay the way it is today, but I haven't won the lottery, so I can't buy the land and do that. So, yeah, probably a couple of powerballs, exactly. Uh, while this isn't the exact use that the 2019 general plan calls for, it's a better and closer fit to that plan than what the land is currently zoned for, and how it can currently be administered. Uh, sometimes a plan looks really good on paper, and when you go out to do it, it's, it's not necessarily going to, the reality isn't gonna look quite the same. So we've got vacant ra, retail space in the shopping centers within three quarters of a mile of the site that has been there for the last 18 years, there's been multiple vacant spaces. So the argument that making this a mixed use, um, per the plan, I, I don't see the market for that changing anytime soon, and, and quite candidly, it wouldn't necessarily mean less residential. So we, we, we still have some of the same core concerns. So I think that this plan with some, with a little bit of fine tuning that we can do, um, i- is probably the direction we need to head in. It's frankly more complimentary to the existing neighbors and the surrounding community than what could end up there, um, and would likely be better for property values and resales, and I, I feel confident saying that, given what I do for a living. I do have concerns, as, as you've probably guessed, about pedestrian access, transportation, density, parking, uh, possibly the long-term school generation assignments and numbers, but I think we can make progress on a lot of that, um, at the Work Session, so I'm gonna support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will support the motion as well. Um, I, I do want to ask the staff to ensure that we focus on a few things during the Work Session. First, I totally agree with Commissioner Frank, and I'm sure others, that, uh, we should, um, touch upon and have a conversation around these seven criteria, since the suburban, uh, mixed use and suburban compact, uh, place types are at the center of this conversation. And, you know, I'll, I'll say that the other side of, uh, Commissioner Frank's, uh, great comment around the fact that there are vacant retail spaces within a short distance of this, uh, this development site, but there's also, uh, retail spaces that are in place that are, uh, barely hanging on, and so one of the things I'm always concerned about is if we were to force new developments to build, uh, and, and acquire retail simply to be in compliance with this comp plan, then the risk would be to cannibalize the retail that is already there. But the reality is, if, for those of us who live in that world, we would never, uh, attract the retail to begin with, because smart retailers, um, run their own data, and they do their own research, and they're not gonna lease space and sign a multi-year lease if they know that they can't make money. So it's really something, this is not to be critical, but it really is something that we have to rethink. And I think that, you know, while this is not the venue to, to do that work, we talked about it earlier, but certainly I think that it's, it's an opportunity, at least for this project, to come up with some ways to have, uh, you know, with the staff and tell, uh, uh, a refined set of talking points for if it's voted out and it goes to the board, so, you know, we don't get stuck in that mire at that level, um, all over again. So there's that, and then also I want to talk about the Lytec Building. I am constantly frustrated with this, with the, um, the notion of having to cap our multifamily buildings at four, uh, four floors. I don't understand it. You know, we are, um, from a land use standpoint, we are a, uh, county that for a lot of reasons, um, our land has become extremely precious and expensive, and I've been preaching since long before I was on the commission, that we should take advantage of the air while it's still free, and not our very expensive land, but it's almost like a knee-jerk reaction every time I see an application, sometimes people are like, you know, "I want less density, why?" If you, if you, if you guys come with 1,200 units, sometimes I see people just say, not just on the Planning Commission, but other folks, you know, "No, it should be 1,000, why?" "It's just too much density, why?" They can't tell you why. You know, you, you want five levels, "No, it should be four, why?" "It, it's too tall, why?" They can't tell you why. I mean, you know, a five-story building is not a monstrosity, and no one's ever explained to me why it's so frowned upon. That's a normal mid-rise Lytec building, I mean, it's quintessential, it's the garden variety Lytec building throughout America. I just want to know why we, because here's, here's my, and I'm gonna get off this, because they want me to be quiet. We are in a, a housing crisis in Northern Virginia, and I know we want to exercise restraint, but we can't change the reality, and it's not, and I'm not just talking about affordable housing, housing of every kind, you know, and we can't build it everywhere, so where we can build it, we need to just go ahead and build it, right? And, yeah, you know, I live west of 15, so I don't want to see all these houses stacked, you know, on the, on the other side of my farm, but where we've decided, but I'm the at-large councilman, I mean, a, a commissioner, right, I'm not just a chair, I'm at-large, and so, so I know that I want to see a beautiful development here, right? But where we've decided as a community, that we're gonna build these kinds of developments, let's go ahead and build them, right? All right. So with that, Commissioner, do you have a closing?
Uh, before I do, Mr. Chair, I would just like to, um, throw a little more onto the Work Session agenda, if, if I might.
Please do.
Okay. Bryce, a few other things I'd like for us to address when we go to Work Session. One are the amenity triggers, uh, there was a comment regarding, and I know there's a staff comment as well, uh, regarding tying, uh, amenity improvements to occupancy permits, and I'd like to have some more specificity around that. With respect to the, uh, the comments regarding traffic, um, we've got a traffic study dated 2021, um, there is already specked traffic for the, the Rec Center and the Silver Line. Is there some way to update some, um, some of the traffic counts in light of the traffic that is impending with those improvements, particularly as it might inform any, any warrant studies? To me, that's very closely related to a potential, uh, signalized control at one of the entrances to the, to the project, um, so I'd like to see if we can explore some ways to improve that information flow. And then with respect to the, um, we haven't really discussed it much, but the pedestrian bridge over the, uh, over the toll road, there was a comment, I believe it was from Ms. Boone, about a pedestrian bridge or even a tunnel, um, at Broadlands, we haven't discussed that, I haven't seen that, that mentioned anywhere, um, but I do know it exists elsewhere in the county, I, I'm told it's, it's in a few different neighborhoods. Could we get some information around that? I mean, if, we're talking about pedestrian, um, pedestrian safety and the already, um, pedestrian crossing at Broadlands is discouraged because of the way the traffic flows, to me that sounds like there's potential to, to really improve, not just with, with elevated crosswalks and whatnot, but actually get folks out of that right away. So I'd like to look at that. And then I also would like to look at the ZMODs on the road corridor buffers, somewhat related to the NRT and the, the TreeSave, um, can we do things, um, with respect to that buffering to enhance it, um, with CNIPE, with Caliber, um, Burmin, uh, things of that nature that we can really enhance those buffers? And I think that's it for right now, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Can I mention something, one little thing? Is it all right if I mention it?
Sure.
Uh, see that, uh, 2021 traffic study is not very well, and because most of the people were not going to work, and some of them have just started, have lots of friends work for the government, they have just started going to work now, uh, from home, they were still working, they were still working at home, now they're going in person. And, uh, so in 2021, it was still pretty well blocked up, the traffic, because most of the people were working from home, and in big companies, they were doing the same thing. So the traffic was not opened up yet, uh, fully, they were still under COVID, uh, operation. So that's a big concern, that 2021 was, might as well be 2022, 2020, like it was all closed up. So a lot of people are, some, most of them are still not going, but they have started going back to office in person, they're just starting out. So another couple of years, when they're fully going up there, that's gonna be really, really crowded, uh, without even this, uh, development. So we gotta keep that in mind, you know, before we go forward with it. Thank you.
So, Commissioner Combs, do you have a closing?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before you do, did, did it come across with all of my other pontificating that I'm a big fan of this project?
No, but feel free to add that, yeah.
I just want to make sure you know. Okay, because I know I talked about a whole lot of other stuff, did I ever get that out? Okay, I love the project. Okay, there you go.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm glad you, you love it. I think there is a, a whole lot to like here. I do really appreciate all the input that we got tonight in, in the public hearing room, I appreciate all the effort that's been put in this far, I'd like to give it some more and see if we can't further refine it, so, um, happy to have the support, and I look forward to working on this as it moves forward.
Awesomeness. So the motion is now laid upon the table, all those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, uh, so the vote is seven to zero two.
Thank you.
The next item, I'm sorry. You know, we can take a brief, uh, break until 8:30, so we'll take eight minutes to 8:30, that took a while, and then we'll finish off the rest of the agenda. We're in.
Can you hear me again?
Hi Paul, you're connected.
Hey, great, awesome. You can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Perfect, sounds much better, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So we start with, okay. This time we will call to order the planning, Loudoun Planning Commission public hearing for Tuesday, May 26, 2022. And the next item on our agenda is SPEX 2021 0041, Poland Road Data Center Yard Extension. Project manager is Rob Donaldson, but I see Mr. Marshant.
It's the other Rob.
Snyder over there.
Robert as well.
With his purple tie.
Yes, sir, it's the theme of the night. So we're going to catch up a little bit.
Sure.
Straightforward application, data center campus on Route 50, equipment yard between two data center buildings. One building wants to expand. It's subject to a special exception. Got to amend the plat. I'm going to waive my presentation other than that. Have the applicant do it and hopefully we'll catch up some time on the agenda. So.
Love it. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Snyder? No?
No, it's, it's open, it's a completely done deal.
I don't, I don't think I suggested that. I said it really straightforward.
Okay, so we have a question from Vice Chair Solomon.
Mr. Snyder, thanks. Just for clarification, this is effectively moving land, providing access from one parcel to another parcel. Both parcels are A, owned by the same owner, and B, uh, they're using, they're for the exact same purpose. One's a data center on the left, one's four data centers on the right. And so this is really more of a paperwork issue than anything else, correct?
Correct. And then Emily, would you mind putting up, could you share this screen? Um, I gotta share, excuse me. When I convert over here, there's an extra step. So multiple parcels that made up this campus, they filed a boundary line adjustment to consolidate all under one. So it was an Amazon campus. The dirt disturbed earth you see here is the fifth building and we consolidated all under one ownership, all under one parcel. This project on the right or the disturbed earth on the right was subject to a special exception. And that's why we have to amend the plat to expand the equipment yard because it expands further than the boundary of the original special exception.
Very well, thank you.
Okay, is a, is the applicant have a presentation?
Good afternoon, or good evening, I guess. My name is Brian Clifford, City Land Use Planner with DLA Piper. Next to me is Nick Georges with Bowler, the Civil Consultant. Marshant pretty much summed this up. If it's, would you mind making me moving forward two slides just so you can kind of see where it is? Those are the two sites. The original was approved by Wright back in the day. The Rawland site, as he noted, was approved via special exception. One more, please, Marshant. Maybe one more would be the best. There you go. It's that little sliver of blue, less than 20,000 square feet, effectively screened from both Route 50 and East Gate view. That's pretty much it. With that, I'll, I'll wrap it up and happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Commissioners, questions of the applicant? Seeing none, okay. At this time, we will open up the, this portion of the meeting for the public hearing. If there are speakers, uh, signed up, Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers that have signed up for this matter?
No Chair Hayes, no speakers.
Um, are there any speakers in the audience or in the chamber who would like to come forward at this time and provide comment on this item? Hearing none, the public comment portion of this item is now closed. Um, Commissioner Solomon, do you have a motion?
I certainly do. Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission forward special exception 2021-0041, Poland Road Data Center Yard Expansion to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Subject to the conditions of approval dated May 4th, 2022, and based on the findings for approval provided as attachments one and two to the May 26, 2022 Planning Commission Public Hearing Staff Report.
The motion made by Commissioner Solomon and properly seconded by Commissioner Barnes. Vice Chair Solomon, do you have an opening?
Um, I'm going to pass. I think the comment I made before should cover that. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, comment, debate, deliberation? Vice Chair Solomon, do you have a closing?
No.
Well, Commissioners, the motion has been laid upon the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries, uh, seven to zero two.
I'm blaming Brian for taking five minutes.
The next item on our agenda.
Tony, we're taking an hour.
SPEX 2021 0039, Ashburn Corporate Center Hotels. The project manager is Zach Pyle.
Chair Hayes, before.
Accompanied by Jackie Marsh.
Before Mr. Powell gets started, I do want to introduce him. He is our latest Planner Three to the Land Use Review Section. We're very happy to have him and well, the commission can welcome him to the team.
All right. Welcome, Zach.
We've got our own rules.
No, welcome Zach. I, I saw your name here and I, I noticed that I hadn't seen it before. So welcome. Be looking forward to working with you. We, we like to do, we like to have, you know, our, our moniker is short and sweet.
Well, thank you Chair Hayes and evening, uh, Commissioners. I am Zach Pyle. I am going to be presenting Ashburn Corporate Center Hotels tonight. The site is located in the Broad Run Electric District. It is 7.16 acres in size and to the east or to the north of Waxpole Road and to the west of Loudoun County Parkway. Uh, it's in the suburban employment place type. To the north, south and west is all data center uses and to the, the east is, there are three restaurant buildings. In this proposal, the applicant would like to increase the maximum number of rooms allowed in the site from 240 to 244 within the existing building footprint. And they are looking to do this by taking four double room suites and dividing them into single standard rooms and that, and getting the four extra rooms that way. Uh, so there is, there are no exterior or, or modifications being proposed either as part of this process. This is a plat, there's not much to see here. They're not, uh, there's no changes to the footprint for the hotel. So the hotel use was originally approved with specs 1998-0016. That was approved back in May 1999. The original conditions set the rooms to a minimum of 160 and a maximum of 240. Uh, and then there was other conditions along with that, uh, that, that specs application that were completed when, um, the hotel was occupied, but they still remain in effect as part of this, uh, application. And, um, once again, it's, uh, in the suburban employment place type and hotels are considered a complimentary use under a special exception. And staff supports recommendation of approval subject to the conditions of approval. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Commissioners, Commissioner Miller.
I actually have a question, more of an educational question. The 240 units, and maybe that's be Aaron to answer this, I don't know, um, that was for the combined hotels? So the property could have 240 units mixed up. Because this particular one is taking two existing suites and dividing them in two to get to 244, if the, assume it's in one of the two hotels. If the other building had a set of four rooms and turned those into two suites, so the, the net was still 240, they wouldn't need to be here, correct?
I'm not sure if I followed that off.
If they took out, they're adding four, they're adding four rooms by taking four double suites and turning them into, uh, single rooms.
If one hotel added four and one subtracted four, yes, you'd be correct, they wouldn't.
They could, they could, they wouldn't have to be here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all you need to know.
On his first day, Mark, on his first day.
That was, that was a musician trick, you know.
I mean, seriously. Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
I just, this is an existing hotel right now, right?
Correct.
What's the name of it?
It's a State Bridge, I believe.
If, if I'm permitted, um, good evening, Commissioner Barnes. Uh, there are actually two hotels on the site. One is an Embassy Suites and one is a Homewood Suites.
Okay.
Um, and Commissioner Miller is correct, uh, the approval is for the entire site. So in aggregate, we can have at present 240 rooms. We're proposing an additional four.
Yeah. Thank.
Any additional questions for staff? No. Uh, thank you, Zach. Do you have a presentation?
I do have a presentation. I would cover largely the very same information because it's a fairly simple application. If the commission would like to hear it, I'm glad to give it. And if, perfect.
You're not required to do a presentation.
No. And if it's the preference of the Commissioners, I am absolutely fine with that. I think the only thing that I was going to add is I saw some confused looks. If we were under, we're in the Route 28 Taxing District and zoned under the 1972 ordinance for this site. If we were in the 1993 revised ordinance, there's an administrative procedure for small changes to special exceptions. Because there is no such procedure under the 1972 ordinance, that's why we're here in front of you.
Got it. Questions for the applicant? None? Okay. We will now open up the public comment portion. Public hearing portion is, anyone, I don't see the secretary. Um, is she there?
She's tied up.
Okay. She's tied up, but she has told me previously that there's no one who signed up to speak. Is that still the case, Madam Secretary?
Yes, that's correct, Chair Hayes.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up previously who would like to come forward at this time and speak on this matter? Hearing none, the public comment portion of this item is now closed. Commissioner Frank, I was looking for you, he was in the way. Do you have a motion?
I certainly do, Mr. Chair. Um, I move that the Planning Commission forward specs 2021-0039, Ashburn Corporate Center Hotels to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval subject to the conditions of approval dated May 11th, 2022, and based on the findings of approval provided as attachments one and two to the May 26, 2022 Planning Commission Public Hearing Staff Report.
Second.
The motion made by Commissioner Frank, properly seconded by Vice Chair Solomon.
Just by a fraction. He never goes there. I live over there. I drive there. I eat at restaurants.
Commissioner Frank, do you have an opening?
I will simply say that because there's no change to the user footprint, there's no outstanding staff issues. And as we've just learned exactly why, this is very administrative in nature. I support moving this onto the board with a recommendation of approval and appreciate my colleagues' support in doing so.
Okay. Comments, deliberation, Commissioners? No? Okay, Commissioner Frank, do you have a closing?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, the motion has been laid upon the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Seven to two, to zero two. Seven, zero, two.
Congratulations, Zach. Your first one went through.
Yay, Zach.
They're not always that easy.
Okay. Next item on our agenda. MDS Equine Center. Project Manager, Rick Hancock. Rick, whenever you're ready, take it away.
I have a presentation tonight. But if you really want to see it, I can show it. Otherwise, I can defer to the applicant who does have a nice presentation as well.
A very short presentation.
You know what? I'd rather hear from Sasha, frankly.
No offense. I'm with you.
Although, we haven't seen Rick in a year and a half. He obviously doesn't want to be here. He's, I'll defer my present. He just wants to get in and out. Maybe that's why we haven't seen him in a year and a half.
Sasha, if you will.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, I do have a presentation. Rick, if you can pull it up, if you have a chance.
That's, that's what I'm trying to do.
But let me introduce you. Our, here with me, sitting next to me tonight is Dr. Erskine. He's the Director of the Marion Dupont Scott Equine Medical Center.
Wow. That sounds very impressive. Thank you for being with us, Doctor.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
And I'll just take this time to say we've also complied with all posting and notice requirements for this public hearing. Good evening. Yes, my name is Sasha Brower. I'm an attorney here in Leesburg at Walsh Galucci. I represent the applicant for this project. And as I said, Dr. Michael Erskine is here with me tonight. We also have the Civil Engineer for the project, Erin Bartley, to address any questions this evening. Next slide, please. Just to provide some context for the subject property of this application, it's just north of Leesburg. Right outside of the Leesburg corporate town, town corporate limits. It borders Idalee Park. Tuscarora High School is to the east as well as Morven Park to the north. The property is zoned to the AR1 zoning district. It's 198 acres in size. And it is also planned for rural north place type, subject to the 2019 comprehensive plan. Just to provide some history, in 1981, the Board of Supervisors approved a commission permit and a special exception for the animal hospital use to permit the operation of the Marion Dupont Scott Equine Medical Center. Next slide, please. Just to provide some brief background on the history of the center. 1984, Virginia Tech founded the MDS Equine Center through a gift from the late Marion Dupont Scott. It is a premier full-service equine hospital that is one of three animal care centers of the Virginia Maryland College of Veterinary Medicine. It offers advanced specialty care, 24-hour emergency treatment, and diagnostic services for all ages and breeds of horses. And you can see some images up there of the services that they do provide. The school has a team of equine specialists in internal medicine, reproduction, sports medicine and rehabilitation, surgery, and also other specialties as well. And this diverse team allows the Equine Center to provide exceptional treatment for their patients. The state-of-the-art facilities at the center provide, include an intensive care unit as well as an onsite diagnostic laboratory, which provide the technicians and specialists there the resources to provide excellent care for their patients. In addition to the medical treatment that's provided, the school provides educational opportunities, research, and to the broader equine industry within Loudoun County and the region. Next slide, please. Just providing some images here that I believe Dr. Erskine could also speak to, but I've included a few pictures showing the work that's occurring at the center. These images show staff providing medical evaluations. I believe this shows a CAT scan. As well as they have a neonatal care center as well for the horses there. Next slide, please. Just showing some additional images. I believe this is an X-ray diagnostic imaging being conducted on the left. And also they do evaluations of lameness and diagnosis and treatment for the horses. Next slide, please. Just to provide some information about the specific applications that we're requesting tonight. Back in 1981, when the original commission permit and special exception were approved, the site was zoned to the A3 zoning district in the 1972 zoning ordinance. And the current, those, the water and sewer is provided by the town of Leesburg. And in 2006, the county remapped the district to the AR1, which created the current non-conformity because of the, this section in the zoning ordinance, which requires that all lights have, all lots have onsite water and sewer. So the Equine Center today receives water and sewer from the town of Leesburg. And so the approval of this commission permit, the approval of the special exception will remove the non-conformity, which will allow the center to expand its services. And the commission permit will permit the extension of water and sewer to the additional facility proposed. Currently, the Equine Center is planning to build a lameness treatment center building. And this will allow for that expansion to occur. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, these applications comply with the policies of the 2019 general plan. Staff recommends approval of these applications and there are no outstanding issues. Approval of these applications will allow the Equine Center to continue fulfilling its mission of serving the region and the broader equine industry through veterinary care and research. As far as complying with the 2019 general plan, as you, as I'm sure you all know, the equine industry is the county's largest agricultural employer. And the center plays a prominent role in supporting the industry, which directly contributes to the success of the rural economy in Loudoun County. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, okay, I see Commissioner Barnes.
I, I got a little statement to help him out.
Okay.
Is it all right?
Go right ahead.
Because they just don't treat, I mean, they don't train locally. But they have worldwide students coming in from all over the world. Europe, European countries, because in my store, they come down to see me for repairs and all that. And they come from all over the world.
Really?
Coming, so it's a pretty well-known Virginia Tech hospital. So, it's, it's automatic. Let's, let's go.
Well, I'm proud of that. Anyone else? Questions? No? Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers lined up for this one?
No Chair Hayes, we do not.
Okay, well, the, we will open up the public hearing and public comment portion of this item at any rate. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward at this time and provide comment? Hearing none, the public comment portion of this item is now closed. I'm looking at, this is in the Catoctin District, which is why, while I haven't been in your facility, I do live in Catoctin and I'm familiar with where it is. But my esteemed colleague, Commissioner Miller, is actually the representative of Catoctin. Do you have a motion?
I do. Before I make that motion, Ms. Sidnor, can I do it as a further move or do I have to do two separate motions?
Are you, are you talking about with respect to the two applications?
Well, the commission permit and then the specs.
I think you could do it that way if you want. I mean, one is approval or denial, and one is recommendation. So, yeah. You could, are you asking, can you do it in one motion? Yeah, you could.
Yeah, did I further move?
Sure.
Okay, that's all I'm, yeah, just get it out of the way. Okay. I move the Planning Commission approve commission permit 2021-0013 MDS Equine Center based on the findings for approval provided as attachment two to the May 26, 2022 Planning Commission Public Hearing Staff Report. And I further move the Planning Commission forward specs 2021-0052 MDS Equine Center to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval subject to the conditions of approval dated May 3, 2022. And based on the findings for approval provided as attachments one and two to the May 26, 2022 Planning Commission Public Hearing Staff Report.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Miller and properly seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Miller, do you have an opening?
I do have an opening only in, from the standpoint of a, as a personal comment on, on the facility and the area itself. I pride myself on knowing where towns and the county begins and ends. And I have spent a great deal of time driving past the Equine Center to the Mulchfields of Idalee. Eight years on the library board, six as chairman, and most of our meetings in the Russ Library. And my daughter is buried in the cemetery on the other side of Russ Library. I've spent an inordinate amount of time on Old Waterford Road accessing these parcels. And honestly, until this application, I did not know the Equine Center was not in the town. I assumed the town boundaries were further out Waterford Road and around Tuscarora. So, it was news to me. And this is a, actually a world-renowned facility. We are very fortunate that they have settled here nearly 40 years ago. And we are thrilled that you are expanding and will be able to stay here for another 40 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments, debate? No? Okay. The motion has now been laid upon the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries seven to zero to two.
See you in a couple of years, Rick.
Thank you Commissioners. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda. ZRTD 2021-008 and SPEX 2021-004 1501 Moran Road. Project Manager is Bryce Johnson. Bryce? Go right ahead.
So, I'm gonna start this with a question of, or preface it with, staff has no outstanding issues with this, so you can guess I'm gonna ask. Do you want staff's presentation? The way I see it, you can have staff's presentation or you can get the applicant's presentation.
Ben has a cooler accent.
I tell you what.
So.
We have, so we have a report from the staff.
Yes, we've, we've given our report. We have noticed.
I think we can all read. I mean, I'm looking down the row. I think we can all read. You know, I'm gonna vouch for Jeff.
It was nice to have a picture of Jeff in the last.
So, what if we allow the applicant to give a very brief truncated briefing? Given that we're on the eve of a holiday.
I will, I will do my best.
Go right ahead.
I guess, but first, before that, do you have any questions for staff?
Do we have questions of staff? I see your light, Commissioner Miller. Vice Chair Solomon, do you have any questions of staff?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, there you go.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. I'm Ben Wales, Land Use Planner with Cooley, here on behalf of the applicant. As staff has indicated, this is a pretty straightforward ZRTD and special exception. It's the standard ZRTD that you've processed many, many, many times. With a special exception specific to a data center use that seeks to add an increase in density. Next slide, please. Site's on Moran Road. All I'll say about the location is it's been developed with light and heavy industrial uses. We're adjacent to the waste management site and also adjacent to, next slide, please. A large number of data center uses. If I was to scan out, there'd be even more. And so this is an appropriate location for this use. Not only do we show it here, next slide, please. But the general plan also notes it too. We're in the suburban employment place type, which anticipates data center uses. We're also on the boundary of the suburban industrial mineral extraction, the more heavy place type, which also anticipates those uses. And consistent with that is zone PDGI. Next slide, please. So the special exception portion of the site, of the application is, is outlined on the right-hand side here. Essentially, we've, we've met the general plan recommendations in terms of site design. Improvements to Moran Road, building design and environmental and sustainable design commitments. Next slide, please. So no outstanding NRT comments. That's a huge one that we always like to note because, because that's not always easy to achieve on an undeveloped site. But, but we've got there. Next slide, please. Something pretty innovative with this application is a number of sustainable design measures that we've proposed and worked well with staff to memorialize in the development conditions. And some of the things that we haven't yet seen with data centers in the county. Next slide, please. To go along with that, we, we exceed the general plan recommendations with a really attractive building design. Next slide, please. Which we really think will complement this area. As I mentioned, this is the right location for this use. It's the right site for this use, and this is a really attractive proposal. Be grateful for any comments, questions?
Okay, questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for this particular item?
No Chair Hayes, we do not.
Okay, so at this time, we will open up the public portion of the meeting to determine, is there anyone in the audience who has not previously signed up who would like to come forward at this time and speak on this matter? Hearing none, seeing none, we, the public portion of this item is now closed. Commissioner Frank? Do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Chair. I move that the Planning Commission forward ZRTD 2021-0008 and specs 2021-00401501 Moran Road to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval subject to the proffer statement dated May 12th, 2022, and the conditions of approval dated May 19th, 2022. And based on the findings for approval, provided as attachments one, two, and three to the May 26, 2022 Planning Commission Public Hearing Staff Report.
Second.
The motion made by Commissioner Frank and properly seconded by Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Frank, do you have an opening?
I, I, I really don't. In any way, my accent, my, my 24-year-removed Midwest accent is not near as attractive as Mr. Wales, so I'll just stop. I think we're good.
Okay, well, Commissioners, debate, comments? No? Commissioner Miller, your light's on? No? Okay. Commissioner Frank, do you have a closing?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Well, at this time, the motion has been laid upon the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries seven, zero, two. The next and final item on our legislative agenda for the evening. and ZMOD 2021-0032 One Loudon, Project Manager Jackie Marsh. Going out in style, Jackie. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you Chair Hayes. Emily, could you turn the, the screen? Thank you very much. I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. Well, with that, I can begin. I'm here tonight to present the One Loudon application. And this application will focus on the 124-acre portion that is located in the Planned Development Town Center zoning district. This is located south of Route 7, west of Loudoun County Parkway, and north of Russell Branch Parkway. Tonight, the applicant is amending the proffers associated with One Loudon in order to add one- in order to add one thousand seven hundred and forty-five new multifamily units, of which two hundred and fifty can be developed as multifamily stacked or as two over two units. The applicant is committing to providing at least ten percent of the multifamily stacked units as affordable dwelling units, and eight percent of the multifamily attached units as affordable dwelling units. The applicant is also decreasing the amount of non-residential uses allowed in the PDTC zoning district by seven hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and fifty square feet. The applicant is also requesting zoning modifications to increase building heights, eliminate the civic use requirements, and allow for an increase in the maximum allowable gross floor area that can be devoted to residential uses. This slide shows the applicant's concept development plan, which shows the layout of the internal streets and the tree conservation area the applicant has added on Land Bay A1. The subject property is located in the suburban mixed-use place type as found in the two thousand and nineteen general plan, which recommends a use mix of sixty percent residential, thirty-five percent non-residential, and five percent public and civic uses. The applicant has demonstrated with the new units, the preferred use mix would be meant within the area that is subject to the ZCPA, and the applicant has also demonstrated that the proposal will meet civic and open space requirements through the provision of existing and planned facilities. Tonight, for our issues of discussion, as staff indicated, we would recommend the applicant provide measurable commitments in the proffers to ensure the property will be built out in accordance with the design characteristics of the suburban mixed-use place type, as well as the intent of the Town Center zoning district. As there is no phasing schedule in the proffers, there is no certainty the site could not develop as entirely residential. Staff would suggest the applicant provide a minimum amount of non-residential development in association with the buildout of the new residential units. Staff also has concerns about the site developing out with single-use and single-story buildings with surface parking. The applicant should update the height minimum, but there is a proffer that speaks to height minimums, and staff would recommend the applicant update this, so the minimum heights would be four stories throughout the site area without exceptions. In any event, the proffer, as it reads, does not provide for vertically integrated buildings with multiple uses. The applicant could also commit to a certain amount of residential units to be provided in buildings with non-residential uses on the ground, ground floor level, and this is something that the applicant proffered to in two thousand and seventeen, when they were seeking additional units at that time. Staff supported the applicant's request to increase building heights is also related to this issue. The applicant could potentially develop a hundred and fifty-foot-tall building next to a one-story building in the PDTC zoning district. Staff could be supportive of increased building heights if the applicant demonstrates how transition techniques would be applied. Staff is also requesting the applicant revise its proffers to separate out commitments for affordable housing and unmet housing units. The way the proffers are currently written, the applicant is attempting to provide unmet housing needs units as affordable dwelling units, and staff is asking for clarification as UNUs cannot be regulated by the zoning ordinance the way that ADUs are. As it remains, or as it stands for transportation, staff cannot support the applicant's request for a twenty-five percent credit against its regional road contributions. This is in association with the cost for the construction of the Lexington Drive-In access extension from Route Seven. Staff cannot support this as the improvement would not be considered a regional benefit, and this is more site-specific, to address impacts of increased traffic patterns with the new residential units. Staff has also made recommendations regarding the pedestrian crossing at Loudon County Parkway and Thorndike Street, and I'll note the applicant is not providing any regional road or transit contributions for ADUs or UNUs. In summary, the proposal has the potential to meet all the recommendations of the two thousand and nineteen general plan. However, the applicant should provide more measurable commitments to demonstrate the application will meet all land use and transportation policies. Staff recommends the Commission forward this to a future work session for discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. Jackie, the write-in off onto, from, onto Lexington from Seven, that you consider that to be site-specific, not regional. However, does not having that write-in with this density, additional density to One Loudon, improve the fut, improve for the future the regional transportation issues that would be otherwise be associated with these homes getting off at Loudon County Parkway and coming into development off of Thorndike? Would, could, could we not say that having seventeen hundred homes and wherever the associated parking is, that some of the people that would come off of, of Seven that way, it's a regional benefit to have this road rather than having these people all go to Loudon County Parkway interchange?
I, I understand your question. I'm gonna defer to Corinne Siggsberry. She's on the line from DTCI, so I will let her answer that question.
Are you there?
Corinne or Lou?
Right, um, right access over Route Seven is that the applicant requesting regional road transportation is not in line with other updates that they would need to do to mitigate traffic. So if they were to have to mitigate traffic along, say, Loudon County Parkway, we would not be looking at making an offset to regional road transportation based on those updates?
I think I might have missed the beginning of that. Could you repeat the answer?
Sure, so the, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. So the issue there is that although the right in off of Route Seven at Lexington Drive provides benefits for the site and then also provides some additional benefits for the region, the, the right in is mostly beneficial for the site, and if they were to not put that right in off of Route Seven and instead were to make updates to Loudon County Parkway to handle the site traffic, we would not be looking at giving them an offset to the regional road transportations based on any updates that they would be doing for their site traffic.
So if they didn't do the write-in, and they did make the necessary improvements for the volume at the interchange, making the improvements to the interchange would not count as a regional road improvement, therefore they would not be able to get a credit?
They would not be getting a regional road credit for making that any updates for the site traffic.
Okay. Thank you. Another question for Jackie. You had talked about the fact that some of the buildings are single stories, and you talked about the fact that without phasing, they could build all the residential with none of the other promised commercial. However, in your conversations with the applicant, did they talk about, did you guys discuss the fact that the reason they would want single-story buildings is specifically to accommodate specific types of commercial uses? In other words, wanting to, did, did you guys discuss, did they talk with you and you chose, whatever the factor was, did that come up in conversation that having some single-story buildings is because they specifically do want to have commercial? In other words, that is their phasing by saying, we want these one-story buildings because there are some retail whales out there, will only go in single-story buildings? That, was that, did they come to you with that version of events?
They've, they've offered explanations as to why phasing is not feasible for them. We understand why most applicants don't want to do phasing either, but it's, it's remiss of staff to not make these suggestions in order to make sure that the use mix is actually fully realized.
Okay, so along with that, though, then, the notion that you don't want single-story buildings, in part of their explanation, did they go over with that they believe that single-story buildings would specifically be for commercial uses?
They, they've made arguments on, on why they think single-story buildings are appropriate in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Commissioner Frank?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So to follow on that line of thought, would, would we? I don't want to make you speak for the Commission, but for, for, from a staff perspective, were we to, were the, the applicant to commit to certain limitations and restrictions and kind of put parentheses around the places where the single story may or may not be, limits on square footage? I'm just throwing out all kinds of things right now, not committing anybody to anything, as well as, yeah, I mean, this is separate from phasing, this is the single-story issue. Would that, I think, would, would having some parameters around it versus it just being open-ended be satisfactory to staff?
I know that the applicant wanted us to talk about this tonight. They realized that this is a policy issue, so I think this is a good time to have this conversation. If we did have, you know, what you're calling parentheses, just, just more measurable commitments, because even in the way that the proffers are written now, we're not entirely sure where single-story buildings could be limited to.
Right.
Height minimums, so it's, if we had some more definitive measurements in areas, language in the proffers, I think that there's a way we can get there.
Okay.
Just, I know the applicant wanted to hear from the Planning Commission.
Well, I, I, I liked your answer. I think that, I think we should work to get there. I think there's appropriate uses for it within the place type in a limited basis. So if we can define what that limit it is and looks like to everybody's satisfaction, I think that that's a good, a good thing to work on. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? All right. Miss, there you go, you're reading my mind. Go right ahead. It's like you've done this before, that's what he says, I think so. Well, just so you know, we're, we're. Yeah.
I know, I gotta go. I gotta go.
We've got like a.
I'm standing between you and your bed and a nightcap.
Yeah, we got a bet that we can get out of here by nine-thirty, and I'm losing, so.
I got this, I got this. Hold my beer.
It's a joke.
My name is Colleen Gillis, I'm an attorney with Cooley, and I'm really excited tonight to be here on behalf of One Loudon. Obviously, I've been before, some members of the Commission before, on behalf of this project, and we're really excited to pivot and take it to the next level. What you have on the screen here is, is an illustrative that demonstrates what the project will look like. The, the Alamo is behind you, and you're looking up towards Route Seven. And you can see first off, as we're coming off of a conversation about building heights, we, we have a diversity of building heights here, but we'll get into that next slide. So when we think of One Loudon today as a, as a resident here, you know, we think of the area that's bounded in blue here. This is the downtown, this is, this is the part that is, that is largely built out, there's opportunity for more development, but largely built out here. And yet, all of the development in the uptown has not yet happened, and it hasn't happened in large measure because of, you know, it's, it's not entitled yet for a plan that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Next slide. This is the area that we look, this, that we're calling the uptown, that we're looking forward to developing pursuant to, hopefully, these approvals. And these approvals would introduce a mix of uses that brings the property, next slide, more in line with the suburban mixed-use place type. And I would imagine you are super happy that we are actually gonna develop in accordance with the suburban mixed-use place type. No need to talk about criteria, no need to talk about any sort of alternative development plans. This proposal tonight would bring this, this property in line with the suburban mixed-use place type. Next slide. What is that place type and what is it called for? So this is the two thousand and nineteen comp plan, suburban mixed-use on the right. The pie chart shows you the mix of uses, thirty-five percent non-residential, sixty percent residential, five percent public and civic. And you know this, you know that it calls for compact pedestrian-oriented amenity-rich environments, et cetera, ten percent open space. Next slide. And that pie chart is replicated in the center here. That is what the comp plan calls for. The pie chart to the left, though, shows you what One Loudon is entitled for right now. Completely opposite of what the comp plan would call for. And what we're proposing to do, we're not quite able to meet the comp plan mix, but to get better in alignment with what the comp plan calls for. And so you can see that if this proposal were to be approved, that we would be at fifty-one percent residential, forty-four percent non-residential, and five percent public and civic. Next slide. And what is that proposal? Jackie did a good job of overviewing it. Initially, we submitted an application for one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four multifamily units, all multifamily units. We were at that time requesting the, the reduction of office of four hundred and fifty thousand square feet, but since then, in working with the community and, and working with staff, we've reduced our application intensity. So what we're asking for now is sixteen hundred market rate units, all multifamily, of which no more than two hundred and fifty could be a two-over-two multifamily unit, a stacked townhome unit, and a hundred and forty-five affordable units. These are those programmatic affordable units hitting from between zero and a hundred percent AMI. And just to underscore how important a commitment that is, the ordinance would require us to do just sixteen ADUs. And so this is a significant upgrade in the amount of affordability that we would be proposing. And important to note as well is that because we're not talking about those criteria, we're not talking about those, you know, could you do more and more and more? This is well in excess of what the ordinance requires, even though there's no expectation in the plan to go beyond, beyond that. And then we're also reducing a modest amount of the non-residential. All of this is so that we can reduce the amount of traffic overall being generated by this property and this proposal. Next slide. And again, to underscore the affordability, we're committed to more than eight percent affordability across the board with units from a hundred, zero to a hundred percent AMI. Next slide. What does this application bring to the community? Well, we're creating five acres of new amenitized open space in the uptown. And we've worked extensively, extensively, for close to a year with an ad hoc committee of One Loudon residents to work through the details that I'm gonna share with you right now. Next slide. That committed to open space, what I'm showing you here is on the left side of the, the screen is as approved today, how much open space, and on the right, and you can see that it increases from seventeen point three acres of open space to twenty-three point three acres of open space. Next slide. And that open space is not just centrally located in Central Park, we are adding acreage to Central Park, but it is scattered throughout the uptown such that everybody, each one of these circles is a one-minute walk circle. So all of those people who will hopefully live at One Loudon at some point will have a one-minute walk to each one of these open space areas. Next slide. We've also gotten very granular with how we're gonna program these areas. This is the main ice rink plaza area that's up in the uptown, it's at the terminus, the northern terminus of Exchange Street. And you can see that this area, it's a little hard to see in this room, but that area of open space is bigger than the area in the One Loudon Plaza today, and we've overlaid the two of those. It would include an ice rink in the winter and that green space area in the summer. Next slide. And then we've also looked at, sorry, and this is a, this is a representative image of what that could look like, you know, in the future, and we're really excited about that. Next slide. Then additionally, we've got the neighborhood park. Apologies, linear green pedestrian street that would be located between existing townhomes and a future multifamily building. Two things to note here, this would be an area, I think, one of the commissioners, I think it was Commissioner Combs, who said this would be your block party street, it would be ballarded off, and an opportunity for, for people to congregate there without necessarily competing with, with vehicular traffic. Big area, you can see in the top right corner how large this is. We've also committed to the multifamily building being adjacent to the, being close to those existing townhomes to be no taller than three stories to, to match that scale. Next slide. This is the neighborhood park, this would be behind some of those proposed two-over-twos. Again, really big area for scale comparisons, you've got Midmore Park in the bottom left just for scale comparisons. Next slide. This is another area that's, would be tucked behind the townhomes, and we would contribute money to the HOA for their construction of this tot lot and this area in accordance with, in accordance with these designs that we've worked with the community on. Next slide. But interestingly, one of the things that we heard quite a bit from the community was the concern not about kids and school capacity, but really where were the dogs going to do their business? And so what you see here are commitments to a number of dog areas here, fenced-in dog areas, places for dogs to relieve themselves. Next slide. And then two locations that are already in place or are soon to be in place irrespective of the outcome of this case to, to commit to those dog areas. And obviously, what the residents who live in One Loudon recognize is that the people who live here are really dog-friendly, and that's what they need relief for, and so we worked closely with the community on this area. Next slide. This also just gives you an idea of how close those dog areas are to each one of those, those multifamily buildings. Next slide. Next slide. With regard to transportation improvements, not, not surprisingly, the community was concerned about transportation improvements. Next slide. The traffic study indicated the need for a couple of improvements. One, we're three signals, and you can see them, North Park Drive and Russell Branch Parkway, Atwater Drive and Russell Branch Parkway, and Atwater Drive and Lexington Drive. Also, we are contributing, we are committed to constructing the right-in access at Lexington Drive off of Route Seven, and a second left-turn lane onto Thorndike Street. Next slide. And then one thing that's not incorporated or encapsulated in necessarily the proffers that we are committed to do is redesign Exchange Street so as not to drive traffic towards, no pun intended, towards, towards North Park, where a lot of existing homeowners live, but instead, next slide, to turn that traffic so that it goes out to Atwater, and those folks would be. and those folks would be driven, no pun intended, to, to use Atwater out to Russell Branch Parkway or to just general avoid North Park Drive. Next slide. But again, we worked with the community significantly on traffic calming measures. And so we can go into detail on these, but we established some one-way streets, left-turn, limited, pole-mounted speed display signs, et cetera, et cetera. And we're committed to constructing these traffic calming solutions for the benefit of the community. Next slide. And this demonstrates, this next slide demonstrates all of those improvements, all of those things that we're committed to doing. Oops, sorry. Go back. Sorry. And those are the, the things that we're committed to doing here. Next slide. With regard to student generation, obviously, you can't talk about a project of this scale without thinking and looking at the student generation. Bottom line is that there's adequate capacity, next slide, in the schools for the county-projected students. So if we use the county-projected rates, adequate number of students, or adequate number of seats in schools. However, we have actual on-the-ground data in terms of Vine student generation. Those are the two apartment buildings that exist there today. And the county's projections for these units is eight-and-a-half times higher than what we're actually experiencing on the ground at the Vine. Next slide. With regard, next slide. With regard to the heights, we can go to 175 feet today. Next slide. But we are committing to reduce the heights appropriately. Chair Hayes, I heard you earlier this evening talk about why aren't we building up? This is that opportunity to build up. Now, this is a great time to talk about the one-story building height. Obviously, we want to build... I'm sorry, increase the height. Yes, to increase the height in a place like this. So with regard to the one-story buildings, I think it's really important to, to talk here. We already have proffers in place that commit to minimum building stories of four stories along Route 7, two stories along Loudoun County Parkway, thereby creating some of those parentheses parameters that Commissioner Frank was already talking about. Next slide. And this allows us to land marquee tenants like coastal flats at Fairfax Corner, as an example. Coastal flats, if required to be interior to a, to a, the ground floor of a building, may or may not have, have gone there. And obviously, it adds so much to the character of this environment to have that one-story building. And we think that to land the sorts of tenants that Loudoun County residents really want to see, we need to do something like this. Next slide. We've also prohibited where two-over-two units can go, which we've done here, also to, to help with phasing. Next slide. And then we talked about the credit for the right-in off of Route 7. One of the things we think is important is we've just not picked 25% just to pick it. That is the equivalent of our regional, of the regional benefit of constructing that. We understand that many people who will use that right-in will be accessing One Loudoun, but 25% of the anticipated trips that would use that right-in are going to go someplace else. Ashbrook. They're going to go to any number of the other shopping centers or some of the neighborhoods off of Russell Branch Parkway. Next slide. Unmet housing needs, this, I feel like it's deja vu all over again. This is just asking for the credit not to pay for those units that are within that 0 to 100% continuing-not-pay-cap facilities and not to pay transit and transportation fees on those units. The Board of Supervisors has, has obviously, next slide, has obviously supported exempting these units from such payments, and we're just looking to carry forward that direction and to take it up with the Board of Supervisors. Finally, I think that this is an important image here, and this shows you what One Loudoun would look like as built out if we're successful with this application. And so we're happy to have further conversations. Next slide. And answer any questions that you might have.
Light, light, light.
I'm sorry. I got excited. So this is to suggest that you're being asked to include units at 80% and below in, in this?
We are including, we are including units that will cover the continuum of housing from 0 to 100%. And all we're saying is, is that those units, we already have in policy and in, in Loudoun County a straight-up clear exemption to not pay cap facilities on the units that are ADUs, and those are 30 to 70%. Where there is a gap in our policy is that we do not say that units that are between 70 to 100% or 0 to 30% are exempt from paying cap facilities. We just don't cover those two ends of the spectrum, and yet they are still affordable units that are within that spectrum of 0 to 100% AMI. And so I think the Board of Supervisors has acknowledged that it's a gap in policy. They have, to my knowledge, not asked applicants, once they got to the Board of Supervisors, to pick up that cap facilities contributions for those shoulder demographics of 0 to 30 and 70 to 100. And so we anticipate that it'll be an outstanding issue until we get to the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors makes that determination, and we hope that they will make the same determination that they've made with recent applications with the same sort of policy consideration.
But, okay, but with all that said, are you planning to offer units?
Yes.
At 0 to 30%?
Yes. We have units already in the Vine building that are rented to folks making between 0 and 30% AMI. We have four units.
Really?
Yes. It's not an entire building. They are dispersed within the building, but there are four units now in the Vine building for those making between 0 and 30%.
Okay.
Yep. And that's an expectation of the unmet housing needs strategic plan, so it's compliance with that policy.
Okay. Well, commissioners, questions of the applicant?
Thank you, Colleen. Can we go back one slide to the, the image of everything? That'd be a better way to point out. So this is the Vine right here.
Yes.
This is the hotel.
Yes.
All of these buildings?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five?
No.
No.
They are not all.
Where are the apartment buildings?
So if you go back, can you go back to the, go forward one slide? That's, let's start there, and then I'll flip you back to this. Go forward one slide. Forward. So all of the buildings here that are teal, those are all multifamily buildings.
This is the Vine.
That's the Vine.
Hotel.
Yep.
One, two, three.
Four. Everything that's purple is office.
Okay.
Everything that is orange is retail.
And then the two-over-twos are all this?
And the two-over-twos are there. I realize in the image that you were just looking at, it shows a multifamily building in the northwest corner, and we have replaced that with a commitment to two-over-twos. The image was done before we, we made the commitment. So there is a, there is a, I can point it out, but there is a tweak to that, to that rendering that you looked at that doesn't demonstrate and commit to as we have the two-over-twos.
And that explains why I saw it there and wanted to go that one. Okay.
Yeah.
Next question. This is where it gets a little interesting with me and why I like the notion of having single-story buildings or buildings that aren't, don't have a height minimum. This is a terrific application. This is a, this is a needed application from the standpoint of RPAI, which is now owned by Kite. RPAI bought this from Millar and Smith. Kite bought RPAI. Is generally largely a, RPAI stood for retail properties, not residential properties. And this is a developer that understands commercial and knows how to bring commercial in. And the housing, while it meets needs the county has, also meets needs of, of thriving commercial development, which is what we need here. Across the street, we, as a commission and the board, approved the Commonwealth 570 units there. There's another Litech Building coming with 100 and some odd units. That's, this is, this is an epicenter. Along with that epicenter, and along with having buildings that are not, don't have to be too big, is there an opportunity for a public-use building that the developer could provide with a cap facilities credit fee that could be used to support things such as, hint, hint, wink, wink, a replacement for the functionally obsolete Ashburn Library?
Yes. So obviously, we've had this conversation. We would be happy to...
We've had this conversation, but we haven't had this conversation. That's why I wanted to bring it up now.
Right. So we've had this conversation. We would absolutely be willing to explore that as an option. In terms of, you said a public-use building, we would, we would consider that would be appropriate to maybe integrate with other uses perhaps, but we want to flesh this out, and we'd be happy to meet with you, anybody you direct here in the county, to explore that further. We understand why this would be an ideal location for something like that, subject to capital, capital facilities credits. And so we're more than, more than willing to have that conversation.
Hopefully, where, if this ends up at a work session, hopefully then and now, we can meet with the library director, John Liu, perhaps Director Yud, and kind of figure out those things, or we could, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, sir. Thank you. How many ADUs do you have up there? I know you have some unmet housing there. How many ADUs in that project?
It's 145 total. We're going to get you the breakdown of how many of them are unmet housing needs units or ADUs. When we say 145 relative to the conversation we had earlier this evening, all of those units are, are programmatic affordable units.
No, those are ADUs, though.
ADUs are unmet housing needs units. ADUs per the ordinance.
No, talk about unmet. I'm talking about ADUs.
Okay. We're going to get that, we're going to get that number, because ADUs implies 30 to 70, and UNUs, unmet housing needs units, are still under 100% or less of AMI, but 70 to 100 or 0 to 30. We'll just get that number.
Yeah, see, unmet, I'm not worried about, because that doesn't work. I'm, I talk about ADUs. That's what I'm looking for.
We can get that for you. Do you want to, can I come back to you on that?
Okay, sure.
Commissioner Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll, I'll ask my question of you all, and really, this is, I guess, also a bit of a request going into what appears to be a move, motion to go to work session on this item. Can we come up with some way to reassure commissioners, supervisors, staff on this one-story issue? Either, you know, I don't, I'm open to what the appropriate way is. I think there's a discussion to be had, whether it's a limit on a certain, a cap on the square footage of it or, you know, it will only be on these two blocks facing this road, you know, something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can work through what makes sense and, and in connection with what already exists in terms of restrictions.
And, and for the benefit of the whole, I know something that came up in our earlier discussions, just looking really, really detailed at the pedestrian connectivity and, and different facilities that may be needed as we... I appreciate what you're doing, and I totally understand it, and I don't think it's a bad idea to redirect that traffic in some of the ways you are, but it will put more traffic on Atwater Drive, and we want to make sure we're, we're being thoughtful about what that, what that may also be doing to the people who are trying to get around there. So I'd encourage you to look at that. And then we still have, Jackie, I probably should have asked you this. We still have a bit of a lack of detail on the affordable housing in the proffers. Is that true?
Yes. The applicant is committing to percentages, not actual numbers. So I saw on the slide that they were committing to 145 affordable units. It's really going to depend on how much of each type of unit they build out. So if they build 252-over-twos, that's their maximum allowed, and the remaining as the multifamily attached units, then the amount of ADUs and UNUs that we would receive would be different if they provided another type, like another mixture of how those two units would be developed on site. So it's 8% of the multifamily attached, and then 10% of the multifamily stacked. But again, there aren't specific, like they're going to build, there, there are only maximums.
Right, right. So if they were to build 200, two-over-twos, instead of maxing out at 250, that's going to throw those numbers off. Because the percentage, everything's going to move, it's a percentage, right? So we redo the math. Okay. I get what you're saying. So we would prefer numbers, fixed numbers, not percentages? No? Not really?
I guess, I guess... I, I don't know if staff would have a position on that. I think that would be, what would the commission feel comfortable with? Just know that you're, you're not getting specific numbers at this point in time.
Okay.
Because it depends on how much they develop out, of what type of unit they're going to develop out.
So, so the usual kind of guarantees that we have of there's certain phasing required as they build out residential units because there's such a mix of different things going on here that wouldn't, we don't have that kind of protection in place? Is that, okay. All right. So I think...
I would disagree, because what we are committing to is, is that for each one of those teal multifamily buildings, you're going to get 8% of those units. If that building is 200 units, if that building is 400 units, you're going to get 8%. A fixed number would be much harder to administer in that regard as it relates to the number of market-rate units that are there. And I would just point out as well, the two different numbers are 10% of the two-over-twos, 8% of the attached multifamily product. So we're not talking about something where it's like we're swinging from 2% to 12% or something along those lines. They are quite close. But that said, we are happy to run the numbers in the kind of worst-case scenario in both cases or, or give you that sense of how different that number is. And if I can just take one more second, Commissioner Barnes, your question was 100, the answer to your question based on the numbers is 130 ADUs, 15 unmet housing needs units. 130.
130?
Yep.
138?
130.
130 ADUs. Do you proffering that?
That's, that's the number based on the calculations. Yep. We're not proffering to 130. If for some reason one of those buildings doesn't happen, we would not anticipate delivering a percentage of those.
So we're going back to percentage again?
That's how the ordinance works today with, in terms of a percentage. Ms. Gillis is right. If this were a building that required an ADU in accordance with the zoning ordinance, it would be, it's by percentages.
Okay.
But if I, if I could...
Is staff okay with it?
We have recommended the applicant make revisions to the proffers, because right now, how the proffers are written, they are trying to regulate their UNUs as ADUs, which the zoning ordinance does not allow. That's how the proffers are written, and that's how we're interpreting them today.
But I want ADUs. I'm not worrying about the unmet housing, because they might as well not be there, because it doesn't help.
Okay, so they are only committing to percentages for their ADUs, which is typical. People can do it, applicants can do it either way.
Okay. You, is staff okay with it?
We have some suggestions to the proffers that we've made to the applicant.
So you, you work with the staff?
Yes, absolutely. We're, we are not today defining, saying we're not okay. I know we got down in this rabbit hole of percentages versus raw numbers. We are absolutely going to work with staff on that language in the proffers.
You're going to staff, okay.
Yes, 100%.
Okay.
100%.
Then I'll work with the staff, because staff tells me the right thing.
All right. So, okay, so Mark, you're good. So, all right, so this is in your district. You got, you got, you got a comment?
Yes.
You, and then you're going to make a motion.
You have the public hearing. There's people.
Oh, my God, I'm sorry. You, and then we're going to public hearing.
Thanks, Colleen.
Mark, you got to talk?
I had a question about, I wanted clarification about the percentages. That might help.
Okay. So Jeff, Mark, and then we're going to public hearing, okay?
All right. Thanks, Colleen. I appreciate the desire for flexibility, but it becomes difficult for us to have a really good understanding of what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, if it's going to happen. And I think the concern I have, and I know Commissioner Frank had some concerns about the one-story retail building, understandable, and I agree with her, but my concern is really related around the office buildings. So this, back in the day, was all office buildings all the time. Made perfect sense, because right up on Route 7, it was, I forget the name that we called it.
World Trade Center.
Whatever, yeah. What I meant was the type of...
Oh, keynote employment.
Keynote employment, yeah. And, and then you have housing behind that and retail in the middle, and everything worked great. That's sort of gone by the wayside. Now we're coming in with more and more residential, more and more residential, less and less office space. But you're going to put office space in here. It's the, it's the purple stuff. So great. How do we ensure that I get any office space whatsoever, realizing that at one time it was 100% office? Now it's much, much less, and even though it's closer to the 2019 GP, the GP says we need to have office space, but you have no proffer commitments, no phasing commitments, nothing other than these really pretty purple boxes? And how do we ensure that we get office space there?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, we have a desire to retain the office. Otherwise, we would have eliminated our office down to zero. We would have said, we're done. And I hear the concern about you're never, maybe you never develop the office, and I appreciate that. It's market-driven, right? Right now, there aren't many people who are going into offices, and so the demand is not here right now. We want to build the office. We absolutely are committed to building the office, but putting a date in... We want to build the office. We absolutely are committed to building the office, but putting a date in space that may or may not work with what's happening with a post-COVID world and people may or may not be going back into the office is something that we're struggling and scratching our head over. We're happy to have a further conversation with you and with your colleagues about it. But what we're reticent to do is to be in a situation in which we commit to something and then it not work out. And we've got to come back and amend the application because nobody wants to see me again on this application if we can avoid it.
Well, I've seen you many times. This has been revised many times since 2005.
Right.
But, you know, it sort of seems like there's an outlier building on the far right-hand corner of the slide. And you have, and that's residential. So would it be possible to hold off on that building until we build half, three-quarters of the office designs? I mean, that's what we have done in the past. It seems to relatively work. Other than the fact that you've come back, I can't even remember how many times, but I'm sure you know. Is there some way to ensure that we get at least something, something out of this? Again, that's, that's the concern. The way we've done that previously is with phasing and with proffers. And it seemed to have worked. Now, nobody wants to do phasing. Nobody wants to do proffers. Nobody wants to do anything other than, I think I'm going to put some stuff here and some stuff here, and it's not just your applications, it's other applications as well, and you know which one I'm talking about. We got to know something.
So.
I'd like to know something before I vote on it.
We would be happy. You've got an office building. I know you're focused on the office buildings on Route 7, but there is an office building that is on the east side of Exchange Street, across the street from retail and that residential building. That building's location is important to the success and the viability of the retail across the street. Single-sided, if you have a street with only retail on one side, it's not vibrant, it's not in demand, and it's very difficult to lease. So a double-sided street is really important. You can come up with countless examples in Reston and other places where you have that one side of a building, it doesn't face additional retail, it doesn't face a pedestrian-activated street, and it just dies. So we're happy to take a look at some of this. We're happy to take a look at this. Obviously, we're going to be concerned about doing something that commits us to predict the market, but we're happy to look further at it and have a further conversation with you about how we can give you some, some amount of comfort.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you. On, on the percentages number, this building right here, the Vine Building that's, that's in there right now.
Yep.
No one spends more time in One Loudoun's room than me. I know that.
Maybe Nick, maybe the client, maybe the people who live there.
No, no, I'm in that office building more than you are, office space more than you are. One Loudoun, okay, in the, in the, in the commercial part of One Loudoun, I'm there more than you are. So, I thought I didn't see you there anyway. That Vine Building took about two years or so to build and then fill. The other buildings, this is a 15 to 20-year project, something of that nature, because you can't build multiple buildings at a time. So you'd be building each one as a separate unit and then go on to the next one. So if we're at percentages, then each of those buildings gets a percentage of affordable units. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if we didn't, if we had a, if we had a total number count, we would either have to build them all in the first building or all in the last building, and more than likely, all in the last building because we need to know when we're going to actually build them and it's affordable for a developer to do. So that's why I think the percentages make sense because if they never build this building back here, because of the market conditions, much like the, for the office space, then I think that, hopefully that kind of, my way of being clear, which is not very good, explains why percentages are more useful in this instance than hard numbers because we don't know when we'll get to build those buildings. Does that make it more accurate?
That's, that's where it comes to phasing. I like to get them phasing, that after so many, you're going to give us so many ADUs rather than percentage. Right? So that, that actually, then we come to them to phasing, you know, I got to know phasing, you know, when they're going to build it. What's going to come first, chicken or the egg? You know, I don't know which one they're going to do.
Okay, fine. That was just my, my question and point. So I think that having percentages lets us know, and they may find that, they'll prove up to 754 units, they may find that it works better to build a building with 220 units instead of 241 units. Maybe, we don't know. So that's why I wanted to make that point about the.
Yeah, we can talk about it in work sessions.
Okay.
Are we going to?
Fair enough. That's all.
Okay. So at this point, we will move to the public comment portion of this item. And Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Chair Hayes, we do. We have three speakers and they should be all in person this evening.
All right, so I do see, our first speaker is Stefan Midford. Please come forward. And you are representing the One Loudoun Neighborhood Association. As a result, you have six minutes, sir.
Thank you. So, good evening. I am Stefan Midford, as he said. I'll clarify, I'm not representing the One Loudoun Neighborhood Association. I'm representing the subcommittee that the association charged with working with the developer and making recommendations to the association.
I'm sorry, sir, did you say, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yep.
Did you say quickly at the beginning that you were stepping in for someone? Are you not Stefan?
No, I'm Stefan Midford.
Oh, you are? Okay, I want to make sure.
Yep. So I'm just clarifying that One Loudoun Neighborhood Association has a sub, has assigned a subcommittee, which I chaired over the last nine months to work with the developer and the homeowners to review this zoning application, get feedback from the residents in the area. So this committee, held committee meetings over the last number of months. We held meetings that were participated in by the developer, by all the homeowners through Zoom sessions, and by committee members that were appointed from the local homeowners. At the same, we had a number of meetings, including an open town hall meeting, which Supervisor Glass attended as well. And the developer did offer a separate open house at the Vine so that members of the community could understand the apartment buildings, the amenities that went with those buildings and so on. So in these meetings, we reviewed the developer's proposal and gathered community feedback to get suggestions, which will be, as we complete our work, forwarded on to the One Loudoun Homeowners Association for final recommendations back to this zoning application to both the developer and you as a zoning approval process. It will come as no surprise at all to this committee that the feedback that we got varied along the lines that you would expect. So occupancy mix and density, obviously, this application has changed the mix and density of the current zoning to the new zoning request, traffic flow and safety, and then lastly, proposed open space, community improvements, and developer commitments. So I'll quickly just go through each one of those and some feedback that we received from the community. So the number one item, which, again, no surprise here, was the density change. We're changing this application from 27% residential to 52% residential. That has a significant impact in the use of the area in One Loudoun and how the residents live, work, and play in One Loudoun. So, and that change in mix of commercial versus residential also has a very quick impact on use of open space, the amount of open space, the allocation of open space, and the use of that open space. So we have worked with the developer extensively, and as Colleen mentioned in her presentation, they've made and listened extensively. There were different aspects of this submission that maybe are different than what you've seen before. There wasn't a lot of conversation about school or school density because One Loudoun tends to be an adult-centric community. It doesn't have a lot of school-aged children. However, we have a disproportionate number of dogs. And so we had extensive conversations about areas of access for homeowners and apartment dwellers to open space, facilities for those dogs and so on. The developer has listened to those. I would suggest that we still would always look for, as anybody would, the most open space we can get, the closest you can get it, and especially with these dog-friendly communities, access to it near the apartment buildings that they're building. As you look at the apartment buildings that were in the application, the big focus was really around the apartment buildings that are adjacent to existing homes or existing townhomes that are in One Loudoun. Looking at those and making sure that in the proffers, we see adequate both landscaping and separation from the existing homes. And importantly, along some of those homes, tiering of those buildings so you don't end up with a five-story building. We absolutely agree with the density of some of the apartment buildings and even the ones along Route 7 could be higher, and we would support that. The ones that are closer to the townhomes that are existing today, we'd like to see them tiered so that there's a structure that makes it easier for the eye. We don't have a seven-story building beside us that have existing homes. So on the traffic flow and safety, most of the conversations revolved around traffic calming on North Park and on traffic access around Uptown Row, which are the existing townhomes at the end of North Park. Making sure that traffic isn't flowing off of Exchange Street onto those things through those subdivisions to get to North Park to exit. And so we do support the strong direction of traffic into Atwater and away from North Park. Through those things, we'd like to make sure that the proffers also reflect that in both the traffic calming measures and the direction of traffic and how to do it. As far as the Lexington entrance, we are supportive of that. But I would say, and we've continued to work with the developer in conversations about where traffic lights and traffic flow and patterns are going to go on Atwater, out past Lexington, out to Ashbrook, and then further on to Russell Branch. Because that is, and to the earlier conversation on that, that is becoming a regional road with those new townhomes that are also growing up on Russell Branch. You can imagine if you had an exit from Lexington, that would be your quick way in instead of coming off of Ashburn Village Road there now. So the homeowners committee at this point is continuing to work with the developer and our board to make a final recommendation. So we would hope that in the working sessions, we stress the continued focus on traffic patterns and the direction of traffic, especially away from North Park and the existing townhomes at Uptown Row. The density and the location of the density within the community, and obviously, the open areas and the use of those open areas.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Shelby Ritz. You have three minutes.
Thanks. And, and you know, Nick is a really, really nice guy, and he's a genuine guy. And it's hard to sit here and oppose him on a couple of different things. Not him specifically, but, but I do, and I'm not opposing anybody. You know, actually, there's a couple errors in that, and a couple of things I'd like you to look through as you look through the presentation. So one of them where you see that linear space and there's a graphic with a woman playing on her dog, with her dog on pavers. You're not going to do that. You're not going to play fetch with your dog on a little paver that's an alleyway, right? And also, it highlights a green area. If you look at the upper top corner of that, that is HOA green area. We have paid a premium for our townhomes to, to have that view, both in the front and the back. We did not anticipate thousands of people with a lack of green area and nowhere to overflow into. We're in a post-COVID world, right? People, people don't, they want to be outside. We are a dog-centric. I'm, I'm, a lot of those dog comments are directed to me because I spend mornings with the two vines, you know, picking up, you know, poo. My dog, you know, because we, if you look at the current vines, they go right up to the sidewalk, right? And I'm being told that that's because of density and that we do have a housing shortage and we do need density. And I do understand that. But the reason I live in Loudoun County and not in Arlington or McLean or other places where I've lived previously is for a little breathing room, right? For a little bit of green. And that's what we bought into. And I'm not someone who's, who's saying slow down density. I've suggested going higher and putting in more, more green space, right? And also, as you look at the proposal, I do think that the traffic study is flawed, the way it was presented to us. And I was on the ad hoc committee, by the way. I've been passionate about this since I've heard about it. It, it, it says, the traffic study was presented as it's less worse than it would have been. That doesn't mean that it's not bad, right? Doesn't mean that traffic isn't insane. I challenge you all, and I, and I think that you're all very dedicated. I challenge you to drive down North Park on a busy day. The way North Park is, if there's a car parked on one side, a car parked on the other, an Amazon truck coming, because we all, we all buy Amazon, you have to swerve. You have to swerve. You cannot fit four cars on that. And you will find people going back and forth from the town center to the park. You will find people unloading carriages, baby carriages. I challenge you to, to do that. The, the other thing, you know, I know that, that the folks here and the developers have given alternatives for dogs. The reason dogs keeps coming up is because it's already a challenge, and we are super dog-centric. And it's kind of one of the things I love. We have doggy playdates in the middle of the day. You know, with some of the alternatives that they've, because of lack of green space, it's like a doggy run on a ceiling or on a roof. I challenge you in August to, to play with your dog on a hot roof and throw a ball. It's, it's, it's a bit of a challenge. So, so again, I am not against move, you know, density. I'm not against building. I'm not one of those, you know. I've lived on a farm in Middleburg. I chose One Loudoun because of the vibrancy of it. I just, thinking thousands of people, by the way, looking in my, in my dining room at me with nowhere to go outside, nowhere to, to run around, there are some great, but if you, I live in that back corner with all the massive buildings, you'll see they're built right up to the sidewalk. And so if it is, if it is, and I know I'm at time, if it's a concern with density, what I would challenge the, the committee to do is maybe work with the developer to work in a couple more green spaces. They did put quite a large one up there, and, and I think, I think it would make us unique to have more. So, thanks.
Thank you. And our last speaker of the evening, Mr. David Kay.
Good evening. I also worked on the committee with Stefan and Shelby, but I am speaking for myself. What I can say is, on the course of that work, I did talk to a lot of neighbors throughout the community, and there are very strong reservations about this proposal, many aspects of it, especially the density. The very reason why we all moved to Loudoun County. I come from Montgomery County, Maryland. It's not a bad place, but I moved away for a reason because of the traffic, because of the overcrowding. If you go around our neighbor, our community, the roads do not handle the traffic as it is. Add another few thousand people and a few thousand vehicles, and it's going to get that much worse. There is no public transportation, yet we are trying to build what's essentially an urban area without any of the infrastructure or any of the benefits of an urban area, just the downsides. To correct what was said, there actually are a lot of children in, in One Loudoun. There is an elementary school, Stuart Weller, and One Loudoun is the largest source of its students. And there is a lot of concern about potentially overcrowding in this school, about what we've seen before with boundary lines being arbitrarily drawn. I have neighbors whose kids went to Farmwell one year and then Belmont Ridge the next year. And then come high school, half of them go to Broad Run and the other half go to Riverside. That is a very serious concern. And I also think it's important to consider, this is not just one rezoning application. We are swamped. We're surrounded by them. There is, there was the Ashbrook that was approved. They want to turn that nursery on 7 into residential. I heard the Commonwealth, I didn't even think that was supposed to have residential. I heard that cited. There's King Cora. So we're talking about thousands of people and thousands of cars just from One Loudoun. What, what, what happens when you add all those other areas in? There's no metro. There's no public transportation. There's an insufficient traffic grid. There is no infrastructure to support any of that. Only if, even if only a fraction of that is approved, there is nothing to support that. So, you know, I'm interested in the quality of life. That's why I moved here. So I, I ask you to protect our quality of life because the, what the overdevelopment is going to do is it's going to destroy it. That, you know, that whole neighborly feel, that whole sense of community we have, it's going to destroy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any others who have signed up to speak tonight?
No, Chair Hayes, we do not.
Okay. Are there any others in the chamber who would like to come forward at this time and be heard? Hearing the. Let's see. Let's see. I, I have to give everyone a chance, right? You know, Ron may decide he wants to come up and say something. So, seeing the, the public comment portion of this item is now closed. Now, would the staff or the applicant like to respond to any of the comments they heard here tonight? No?
I, I would just note that we are adding bus shelters, because there is transit service to the property today, but other than that.
Awesome. Well, Commissioner Frank, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Chair. I move that the Planning Commission forward ZCPA 2021-0002 and ZMod 2021-0032, One Loudon, to a Planning Commission work session for further discussion.
Second.
The motion made by Commissioner Frank and properly seconded by Vice Chair Solomon. Commissioner Frank, do you have an opening?
I, I do, Mr. Chair, I have a brief one. I think as we've, we've probably all expressed tonight, most of us, I don't want to speak for everyone, but feel like this is a good project. This is the kind of, you're moving into the use that the 2019 plan envisioned. And if you're going to add residential, this is, quite frankly, where it probably needs to be. But that said, I, I think we have an opportunity here in work session to tighten up some of the proffer commitments and design details, commit to some, see if we can commit to some phasing and limits on the one-story building use. And I wouldn't mind, having heard from, from our public speakers tonight, you know, is it, is, can we look at a couple of these buildings, perhaps they're taller, to Chair Hayes' point earlier, but with a tiny bit smaller footprint, so we don't lose density, but we do gain green space. Maybe that's something we, we need to look and see if there's an easy fix somewhere to do something like that. So those are things I, in addition to a couple of transportation issues and the transportation credit that I think we'll need to discuss at the work session, but those are, those are the things I hope we can work on and further refine, so that we feel like this is an excellent application on its way to the board. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, sir. I, I got, again, I'm going to say, but I always say, we got to listen to the residents living there already, and they have made the comments, and we have to answer their concerns. And staff and applicant, both, you have to see how you can alleviate. And like she said, that the green spot, green grass you showed, that's not exactly what the dog park is. He said, this is the, whatever, open space, so it was wrongly showed as the dog park. So, show the real stuff, where you're going to have the dog place, not already existing places that you took the picture of, and there it is, you know? So we got to, we got to be very careful and give them enough open space. They need open space, and that's what they're concerned, and the traffic. So, that's what we got to do, but the residents are telling us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Chair. I'm generally supportive of this application. As we go to work session, one of the, a couple of things I'd like to look at, one, discussion of a public use space, and we can work on that, I'm happy to take the lead, because that's my thing. But also, on the, the phasing issue, perhaps regarding the office buildings, perhaps there's a workaround that just says that we designate those land bays as specifically for office only and not for residential. Maybe that could be a solution, if that's allowed, if they can work that through. That way we know that all, the only thing that can go there is office buildings, and when the market determines there's a need, it'll go there. And I mentioned that because within One Loudon, the commercial part where I'm at more, not the residential part, there's a 16,000 square foot building sitting there right now, empty. Right now, empty. And other small commercial spaces come and go, of course, but 16,000 square feet is a sizable space that's built, it was occupied. The tenant went, went away, and now it's been vacant for a year and a half or two years, and who knows when someone new will come in. Just building it and having it sit empty doesn't get anybody anything, that's one of the general problems with phasing. And I, I have full confidence in this developer and the previous developer that was on this property. They built Loudon County, they built Ashburn Village Boulevard interchange ahead of doing everything. So, I'm generally supportive of, of the way they're doing it without the phasing, but perhaps we could address that issue by committing to those land bases only being for, for office. But in general, again, this is what we need, and it's a good spot for it. I do want to comment on one of the gentlemen that said, there isn't a, a large amount of units coming in this corridor. And frankly, from, with the addition of the units we gave to King Cora, 1,200 additional, all the way up to Belmont Ridge Road, there are, sir, applications out there that will cover approximately 7,000 units. And you do bring up a very valid point, and one that I've talked about before, and how we accommodate not just the schools, but other things, like where do these people take their cars to get tires and, and oil and stuff like that. And it is absolutely a concern, and we should address it in the aggregate, not just on specific parcels. However, as it relates to the broader corridor, this application tends to do the things that it needs to does to accommodate what they want to bring to it, and for the reasons as such. And that's why I'm more inclined to support something like this than I am the other 5,000 that are still on the docket to come along. So, but is, is a, is a point well taken, and one that we should be looking at and considering as we look at the remainder of the application in this corridor over the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not really a whole lot to add, in light of all the things that have been very well said. I, I do take the public comments to heart. I think there are opportunities there to work on the things that were mentioned. I, I have some concerns about phasing. I know we need some, something in the form of commitments to control the build-out, but a project of this scale needs flexibility. And so I just want to be careful that we're not, we're not imposing something that is going to stand in the way of financing the project to completion. That's a real big concern of mine. I do love the idea of exploring more vertical density along that Route 7 corridor, and particularly if that opens up some more open space, some more green space. I don't know if that, that does parlay into any sort of phasing conversations, but perhaps that also creates opportunities for wider rights of way, helps with traffic and things of that nature. So, I'm excited to work on this, this is, I think is a great application. It really brings a lot to the table. There's just a lot of opportunity here, so I'll support that motion happily.
I just want to go on record and say, I think it's a fantastic project in concept, to build upon the success that is already One Loudon. I think, you know, there are some, some, it's already been stated, there are a few places around the edges where I think we can work collaboratively, but I am, in most instances, as much as I talk about my policy thoughts around, you know, housing, affordable housing in general, when we're talking about an actual development program, I try, and I try to encourage others to not, let's not play junior developer. So I want to just, you know, give you the freedom and maybe put some parameters in place that, you know, enforce our policies and, you know, discourage impacts that the community would not enjoy, but not try to do your project for you. So, I think that that's what we can do in the work session. So, but I love the project. You got a lot of good stuff in your district. I mean, I should have, you know, maybe, I could move. You know a Realtor? I know two. Which one's the best? I'm just playing. Do you have a closing? You got a closing, Commissioner?
No, no, I, I think we're all set, thank you.
Well, Commissioners, the motion is now laid upon the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries 7-0-2.
Thank you.
That concludes the legislative portion of our public hearing for this evening for Thursday, May 26, 2022, Loudon County Planning Commission. We will now move on to the administrative component of our meeting. Mr. Galindo?
Yes, sir. The only thing I will raise tonight, at each of your seats, when you sit down, there was a very simple motion that was put in front of you, based on emails I'd sent around a couple of weeks ago, on working to reschedule one of our potential Ravana work sessions that had gotten double booked by T-Luck Rescheduling. So if one of the Commissioners would make a motion so we can formalize that, I would be thankful.
Sure, Mr. Vice Chair, would you mind making?
What day is it, Mr. Galindo?
It's on the paper in front of you.
No, the what day?
Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission rescheduled a July 18 work session for consideration of the Ravana application to July 20.
Yeah, but I was looking day.
It's a Wednesday.
July 20 is a Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. That's all.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion made by Vice Chair Solomon is properly seconded by Commissioner Miller. Commissioners, I mean, Vice Chair, do you have an opening?
No, thank you, I think it speaks for itself.
Okay. Commissioners, the motion is laid upon the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion is carried, 7-0-2.
Can I ask a quick question about the schedule?
Sure.
June 1st is no longer Ravana work session?
Correct.
So when are the other Ravana?
June 16th is the first one.
16th is the first one, okay.
Can we send out like an updated email?
There's already a schedule that's been sent out for that one, now that we've formalized this, I'll send out one for this meeting from tonight.
You send out one that has like all three of it, with this one? Oh, I just, I just fixed it myself, since I've been sitting here. Now, the question is, will it, will it work once I leave this building? So like even the DC government, like there's a thing where it works like in the building? Okay. First, let's adjourn. So we're all set, any more administrative items, Mr. Galindo?
No, sir.
Okay. So this meeting of the Loudon County Planning Commission, public hearing for Thursday, May 26, 2022, is now adjourned. Happy Memorial Day to all of my colleagues and all of our wonderful staff.